Craig, you ready?
Just cause I'm liking some and we're preparing, so no comment after like.
All right.
She always has a delay.
Oh, no. It's like this dead silence waiting for the cue. It's like...
Good morning. Let's call the Rankin County Board of Supervisors to order. This time, August the 4th at a little after nine at this time. Can I have Mr. Craig Slay? Would you do our invocation for us, please?
Father, we're just so grateful for the opportunity again to come before you, before we start this meeting. We need both your presence, Father, your power, your provision. I pray, Father, for these gentlemen who you've set in place and authority. I pray, Father, for them to have wisdom, for them to be discerning, Father, to know what is in the best interest of all the citizens of Rankin County as they consider. And joy to assemble together like this have been paid for a very high price. Father, thank you for the sacrifices that have been made so that we can stand here today, assemble here today, and conduct this so we can... Bless them, honor them, Father, and keep them Christ-like.
Amen. Thank you, Craig. Okay, at this time, we have Judge John Shirley. We have public comment, please.
That was number three on this, sorry.
That's okay. Come on up.
Maybe it's by order of importance.
I doubt that.
Good morning.
Good morning. I want to talk to you about three issues that we've got over at Justice Court. Two of them we've talked about before. The three issues are security, compliance with the American Disabilities, Americans with Disabilities Act, and the third one is the health risks. All three of these are equally important. I want to make sure everybody understands my comments are not meant as negative. What each of you authorizes him to do. My security comments are not meant as negative about the sheriff, because the sheriff is limited as to the building, and he's also limited as to what the board will allow him to do. But all of you, I hope, are aware of the security issues that they had at Chancery Court last week. They were very serious. I understand that the Chancery judges demanded immediate... Judges are equally concerned about those same issues for Justice Court. If the building's security issues aren't resolved, we're confident that a tragedy is going to occur. Three emotional people. Some of these emotional people are strung out on drugs. Some of them are emotionally at their wits' end because of personal issues. Some of them are suffering from untreated mental illness. Some of them have a combination of those. Lives are at risk every day in Justice Court. That means the litigants, the jurors, the witnesses, the attorneys, the court clerks, and... Fixed, somebody's going to get shot, which means that somebody's going to get injured or killed, and none of us want that to happen. We believe, the judges believe, that Rankin County Board of Supervisors has one very important duty, and that is to ensure that the people in the building are safe. There are several long-term options that are available. One of them is upgrading the Justice Court facility. Is to put Justice Court and Chancery Court in one building together. That way, you have all the security issues in one place. You don't have to worry about dealing with it in two different courtrooms. You just have it in one place. You've got two choices. You can spend the money now and fix the problems, or you can wait until a tragedy occurs. If you wait until the tragedy occurs, Rankin County's going to get sued. Attorney, and then Rankin County still will have to fix the problem. The compliance with the ADA issues. I've talked to you about this before. We recently had someone, since I came to you... Restroom. None of the restrooms are ADA compliant. That person could not use the restroom. I hope and pray he doesn't sue Rankin County, but who knows what will happen as a result of that. We've got a jury trial coming up next week. We've got a hundred jurors summoned. All of those probably won't show up, but if any of them are physically disabled, we don't have restrooms for those people to use. We cannot... Wrong. We need to be able to do that. Again, you've got the same two choices. You can spend the money now and fix the problem, or you can wait until there's some damages, then Rankin County's going to get sued. Rankin County's going to pay money. Rankin County's going to pay an attorney, and then you still will have to fix the problem. We've also got the issue of health risks. We've got an asbestos and a mold contamination problem. That... Public and the employees. I mentioned this to one of the board members at one point recently, and what he did was, he just changed the subject. Well, that told me that some people have the attitude of, well, if I ignore the problem, it will disappear. I assure you, the problem is not going to disappear by ignoring it. The board, again, has got two problems. You can spend the money now and fix the problem, or some... Rankin County's going to get sued. Rankin County's going to pay money. Rankin County's going to pay an attorney, and then Rankin County still has to fix the problem. Now, I've mentioned that there are two options on each of those. Actually, there are three options. The last option is a tragedy occurs and you have to fix it. The other option, which we're considering, is that the judges take action. We don't want to have to go down that route, but it's going to depend. We're insisting. We want immediate resolution to these problems. We don't want just an answer to say, we're going to talk about it and think about it. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. And let me just tell you, if you're going to ask me... Are the same as they're dealing with over in Chancery Court, and it would not be smart for me to list all of those problems, because with that, then it is a recipe for somebody watching this on some video or whatever to say. So I don't want to tell each of those right now. All of you probably know some of those, but I'd be glad, in private, to have a conversation with Mr. Slay, Mr. Stringer, whoever you want me to have those with, but I try to answer any other questions.
Judge, I know we've talked about the same, and we, as a board, do take this very serious, you know, and we're trying to figure out a way... Fix the problem. That's one of the problems that we do have, trying to figure out a way to get these problems addressed while we continue to have the services, continue to have court. So that's one of the problems that we're looking at and basically have gone out and started, you know, started this process. And I know it sounds like it's on deaf ears, but it's really not on deaf ears. If you have some solutions, you know, how... This happened, because like you said, if we have a hundred potential jurors coming in, there's only a very limited space that we do have. So, you know, it's, and I guess I'm talking on specifics next week, week after, whatever. How are we going to integrate this courtroom with another one while we're trying to do something else to upgrade these?
To look at putting another building out there for Justice Court and Chancery Court?
Absolutely not. Those are some of the possibilities that we are looking into. In fact, we fast-tracked this. We are looking at, you know, the possibility of getting... It's going to happen. It's not of just if, it's when. So it's not, but it's not a quick fix, maybe, because by the time we do a quick fix, the last thing you want to do is just, let's just throw up a building and wish we'd have done it a different way. So, again, like I said, I may be speaking out of turn, but from all indications, what all we've talked about is how all of this goes together.
And done promptly. I understand you're not going to have a building built or building fixed tomorrow.
Right.
But I want it, we want it done before a tragedy occurs, because the judges have decided, if you all are not going to do it, we're going to make sure it gets done.
Right. As we do too, we're, you know, I'd rather be proactive than reactive, so that's not...
Yeah, we definitely need to find out what your concerns are, so we can try to address them.
Okay.
If... And also Craig Slay, and I'm sure Johnny Jones and all the other players in this, you know, it's, so it's not, it's not that we're not, we're just sitting back doing nothing. I think that it's just a matter of how we're going to do this and do it for the future. Do it the right way the first time.
Do we have a timetable?
I'm looking at Colonel Stringer, and he's shaking his head no.
Well, I mean, I mean, are we going, am I going to have the same conversation a year from now?
I don't think we'll have the same conversation a year. We may be having a conversation to work what progress is a year. The progress here on the approaches. And with the, we've got to talk to our county history some, as you will, if we all...
Right.
And the, and the president, I think, you know, I agree with what you say. The issue is, is how do we fix... And because we can't stop having court. And then, but how do we continue to have court while we fix something? And it also has to do, obviously, the taxpayers' money. And it has what I, and we have been, I don't know if this is the right time or not, but what we're... addressing the issue of Capitol facilities. And this is what we're talking about here. How do you do, how do you shut something down, keep doing what you're doing, and not get to the point that you have stopped and you can't do anything else? We do have the issues. We've got the issues of the Chancery Court. We've got the issues of the Justice Court. We also have the issue... Those are not separate from each other, as you can indicate, Judge. The, do we want to do something to have a Justice Court and Chancery Court in the same facility? There are, I've heard pluses and minuses on that one. We obviously are anchored to the jail. We're not moved to the jail. At least, I don't think it's... As you get with the jail, you also have the Justice Court. I think, I don't think we can have the jail here and the Justice Court all somewhere else. You've got to be able to get people back and forth from the jail to Justice Court. So then you pretty well got Justice Court anchored right here in some manner. The, so what... Propose is that we engage Engineering Services to give us, to work on and to give us... Of a master strategy on the Capitol facilities. We do include, we're also taking a look at how we finance them and how we do that. Leanne has been in here two or three times, to how we take what monies we have and what monies we can get and impose that money onto the requirements, figure out... systemic way, and that we don't get to some point where we run out of money and we haven't got the job done. So, but those three things in particular, we got to do. And I would hope that the board would give me the authority to enter into an agreement with Engineering Services where we can get on and get started on this. You know, for example, we keep...
Well, we established that at the beginning when we started talking about that.
Yeah, we just don't know what to do with telling architect. Now, an architect may end up being on board pretty doggone soon, but let's get to the point that we can talk to the architect. That includes, let's get, when the architect comes in, we should have a pretty good idea of what it is that y'all are looking at. And that in comparison to what the... First Mr. Mina facility. Now, there are several options on that, and let me tell you right now, that one of them is, is from a financial standpoint, we've got to figure out how we get through about the next ten years, because that's when the current bond issues get paid off in about ten years. And so... We may have to do something that satisfies the requirement, I'm not putting this off, but satisfies the requirement in the current facility. That will be a ten-year... Doing something expanded. That is all what I'm talking about and asking that I would certainly like Engineering Services, who already does this for the roads for the county, to also take on the job of advising us on Capitol facilities, Capitol facility plan, budget.
So as, as the county administrator has said, and even the sheriff, we've all been in conversation with this along with the board, so it's not, it's not been on deaf ears, I can assure you. And we definitely do not want a tragedy up there. We see the, we see the problems. Should it have been done years ago? Absolutely. You know, it's, you know, you look for the future... And look back five, 10 years alone from now and say, we should have done it this way. Let's look out for the future and do it the right way, because it is the, our constituents, taxpayers...
And I appreciate that, and I understand you have the taxpayers at heart, and I respect that, because I happen to be one of them also.
Right, right.
But at the same time, they need to, we need to understand, you're going to pay a little, you're going to pay some now, or you're going to pay a lot later if somebody dies.
Correct.
And then you get ordered to fix it.
Right.
We're probably, we're a little further along, maybe, than we have shared with you. Sometimes you don't share certain things, because once you start, it looks like it's closer than you think. But we are, we have been, and we're closer, and have been working on this for some time with everything Mr. Stringer has said. So it's, it's something that we've discussed, and we are probably further along, as you see now, than we have basically... We understand, and there's just a lot of factors involved, as he described, so, but I want you to know, we were like, I think you understand, we are further along than maybe you first thought. I hope so, anyway.
Analysis and hiring Engineering Services, I think that's a great idea, but that's still a time-involved process, evaluating and putting together all that information. I think we need to do something on a temporary basis...
Correct.
...to correct these problems, and let's try to head off any kind of tragedy. And for heaven's sakes, can't we renovate?
I would think so.
To the point that it's ADA accessible?
I think... Let me turn this on. I think you're absolutely correct, Mr. Johnson, and we have been over and looked at it, and I've got to get back with archives and history, because anything we do in that part of the building, they have to bless. There is a possible solu, solution is too strong a word... That can be made in that regard, but they would have to approve it. I think there's a place we could install an ADA restroom close by, in that courtroom, but we can't just go and start working on it.
Right.
There are other things that you're, you're right, Mr. Johnson, we need to do, and that is, we need to, we need to replace the windows. If we can secure, just without, the judge is right, don't want to talk too much about where the weaknesses are, but there are things that we can do to improve...
Colonel, do you know what all his concerns are?
Not all of them, but I've talked to him about several of them, yeah.
Okay.
And with, about the first thing that we're going to do as we get into all of this Capitol planning, is, the first thing we've got to do is what we have to do immediately to solve the immediate problems, and we want that to be part of the whole... And done, and how it will fit into anything we need to do in the future. And so we, but I think we can put a restroom in, and I can walk through there, quite frankly, and I can pick out quite a few areas of security that it's not that difficult to do. And we may well, as we... There may need to be more at certain times of the day or the week. We may end up asking the sheriff if he can't help out, and if we ask the sheriff if he can't help out, he's going to ask us if we can't help out in making that happen. So those are the things we're going to have to address.
Right.
Right, none of the security issues are... Limits what he can do.
Yes.
So if you need a motion to go ahead and hire...
Just enter into an agreement of the Engineering Services, that they perform the... You know, assistance in budgets and planning and oversight, the same as they do with roads.
Okay to do is a public comment? Is it okay for me to make that motion, a public comment to add that out?
Add it to the agenda.
I'll make that motion, add that out.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have a motion to move forward with Engineering Services.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign?
Nay.
Motion carries. So let's get the ball rolling. Mr. Buster Parker.
Yes.
All right. If you will, let's start working... And everything, so we can get these immediate, and I understand, like I said, I think this whole board understands that we need some immediate concerns addressed, so from there, we'll expand out.
It'd be nice if we found out what they are, too.
Yes.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we have Chancery Clerk Larry Swales briefing on the new...
Good morning. Good morning, all the supervisors, Mr. Stringer and Mr. Craig, and thank you for the opportunity to come and share with you our new online version of our online records. I also have in the audience today my honorable Chief... Becky Boyd, who's joined me and, as a friend, I'm not here to just be an observer, since it would, this does tie into affecting our offices, since we're fee-based offices. Also, Mr. David Moore, Jr., who is here as a consumer and a user of this particular service as well. I'd also like to recognize Mr. David, David Moore III, who is my chief deputy in court, and my, and of course, y'all, I know Jessica... And records. We have excellent staff and a great, hard-working bunch of employees who continue to help improve the services that we provide for all of the 150,000 constituents of Rankin County. Mr. Chairman, thank you this morning for allowing us to come and share with you at your request, our online records version of what we have, and any concerns that you may have in regard... Make this very possible. This is Mr. Richard Greenlee with Medir, president of the company, and Mr. Larry Belleponni, who is also an employee and host of position, I think, with the company, but I'm not sure what that is, and as well, but... Prior to any comment, just turn it over to Richard Greenlee and Larry Belleponni to do a demonstration of our online records, and then we can proceed from there with any question that you might have.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I'm just going to get started here, kind of just, you know, what Medir, this is Medir's website, this is our subscriber-based website, we, you know, have subscribers, subscribe to Rankin County... Kind of go through a quick little demo, and then we can have interactive questions or have real...
Okay. Thank you.
What we have here is our search screen. It's an online version of what abstracts in the vault can go to now. You're able to search a general search by a person's name. You can come in and search by section, township, and range, also search lot, block, and section. Can put in as much as the name as he needs to, he or she, and hit the search button. The results are displayed... And then if this is the person of interest, they can click there, and it will bring up the document. At this point, if that's the document they're interested in, they can print that document, or they can also even print out the legal information. Just to show a legal search, if I go back to my search screen... Go to my sections tab, put in one, five, two. This gives me all the paperwork that's going on, on that parcel. At this point, what's helpful to search is, they can then export these results... Carry on the rest of their title searches. The information here goes from previous day's business all the way back to where we've scanned for the county to January of 19... Just again, once your list is up, brings the document up, shows you any other parties related to that document, any legal information related with that document. And simplistic as it is, that's basically what the site does.
Let me ask you a question, and then, does this have any, would any information... Against a person, or how does that work?
This is only records that are recorded in the Chancery office, so if, I believe, federal tax liens, maybe...
Lease spending.
Lease spending, construction liens, deeds of trust.
Okay, so this, this also would help, because I do have two children in the school district, so whenever they ask for information from me to, for my wife to take for the... County resident, I can pull that up, or, and boom, I've got it right there then. So that will help tremendous, right?
Correct. It's the same as being back in the vault.
Correct.
Yeah. I'll give you, I'll give you a laundry list of everything you record, if you'd like that, but...
Well, I mean, this is, I mean, anyone that has children understand, you know, just to get your, even though you've lived here forever, they ask for a ton of stuff to make sure you're a Rankin County resident.
Things that we are, we are, as is referred to, we're a unique and diverse office. I mean, that's what we do in the fee system, but deeds and deeds of trust, and assignments and releases, and partial releases of mortgages, powers of attorney, charters, federal tax liens, lease payments, construction liens, condominium liens, federal civil judgments, and military discharges. So we basically record just about anything. You bring it to us, we're probably going to record it for you. That's who we are. We are, that's what we do, but I will caution you, if you bring me an incorrect document, I still will record it, but it won't be my fault, okay?
So you do, you also deed the two-four teens?
Public information, though. They're not public. They're not public information at all, because they have, they have pertinent information on them you cannot access.
But you, but you put them in the...
I lock it, they're in the locking key, as well, and stuff like that.
And basically, just to kind of give you a little, you know, our, my company is Medir, and we do several things. We provide land records, recording system, which Rankin County, Chancery Clerk, uses our land record recording system to just record his land records, and we... Again, Rankin County and Murphy and, and before Larry, Larry, who hired us to historically scan and digitize the backup, a lot of the records. But we also provide, you know, mostly to business customers, two things. E-recording of land records, which I think we can, here, demonstrate now that, you know, a mortgage company or bank can electronically record through us. They're our customer for a fee, this clearly... Also, we provide public access records, you know, we take those records from Rankin and other counties in the state, and, you know, I guess, bring them online and make them a useful form...
So we basically record just about anything. You bring it to us, we probably going to record it for you. That's who we are. We are, that's what we do. But I will caution you, if you bring me an incorrect document, I still will record it, but it won't be my fault, okay? Because
So you do, you also deed the two, four teens?
Public information, though. They're not public. They're not public information at all because they have pertinent information on them you cannot access.
But you, but you put them in the
Lock, they're in the lock and key. Got you. And stuff like that.
And basically, just to kind of keep you, you know, our company is Madeir and we do several things. We provide land records recording system, which Rankin County, Chancery Clerk uses our land record recording system to just record his land records. Again, Rankin County and Murphy and before Larry, Larry, who hired us to historically scan and digitize to back up a lot of the records. But we also provide, you know, mostly to business customers, two things. E-recording of land records, which I think we came in here to demonstrate now that, you know, a mortgage company or bank can electronically record through us. They're our customer for a fee. Also, we provide public access records. You know, we take those records from Rankin and other counties in the state and, you know, I guess bring them online and make them a useful format for individuals can subscribe to the service too. Our service, Madeir's service is a fee-based subscription to those businesses who are in here all the time and know what they're looking for. There's no map tied into this right now of things of that nature. This is for a title company or a bank who wants to do, you know, a title update, close file. They subscribe here versus them to come down to the courthouse and do the same search and go through the books and make a copy fee and all that type of stuff. So that's kind of what you know, agreement to give him some, say, interaction of how this presented, you know?
And I think it may be appropriate this time, I'll let David Moore, Jr. come as one of our subscribers to tell you what the benefits are of having this out there. And also know that there is a subscription fee tied to this, but there's a reason for that. David, do you want to share?
Well, there is a subscription fee. Of course, it's a matter of convenience for me. I've had a fair amount of time in land records as well, which I can certainly do. But it's a lot better for me if I can sit at my computer or my paralegal can sit at my, at her computer and be able to pull up a deed or a deed of trust or whatever we need. And I don't mind and it saves me time from having to either walk across the street and risk body and limb crossing Highway 80 or have to drive every year to, to get the same records. So I love, I love the convenience that this offers. This uses modern technology and it's a great thing. I also don't object to paying for it because Larry's office and Becky's office are both fee-based offices. And I love that as a taxpayer in Rankin County, you pay for it, if you don't use it, you don't pay for it. I love that. I don't want my tax money, it's a better use of my tax money for you guys not to have to fund their offices if fees that they generate do it. If I don't need a marriage certificate from Becky, then I don't have to pay for one, nor are you using my tax dollars to pay for one. So I love that. And same thing with land records, making copies. I certainly don't mind paying for those copies because I understand that's what I need. You may not need it. System and it's a very convenient system for those of us who use it on a regular basis.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
What is the fee?
And we, right now, the fee is, it's kind of like, like David said, you know, it's kind of a cell phone thing. The base, the base fee is $49.95 a month. And that gets you up to so many downloads. I think that's 200 downloads. And I say, when you pay, you can search all you print this. Hit that button, it downloads that document. Whether that document's one page or 60 pages. And so, but we have quite a few, you know, subscribers that go to the next tranche, which is 79 and they're buying away this thing 24/7, doing title updates and closings and mortgages. So it goes from $49.95, we just implemented a new, you know where it goes after that, $79.95 and
And you get, it's, there's 75, 150, and 300 downloads. And it's $49.95 and then it's $79.95 and I think $99.95. At any of those prices, the amount you're downloading, you're still plus the time of gas, I have a number of title searches that would drive in 50 miles out and say, this is just an unbelievable deal. You're saving the guy's money.
Right. Well, let me ask you a question. Is for one download, is that considered one download then?
That's one, that's one download.
I got you.
And then also understand, you can look at them all you want. It's just when you download it, when you hit against
Need a hard copy.
Right. And this is different to some places out there where you can't even look at the document to you agree to pay to a download charge.
Really?
And in some cases, they may charge a dollar a page and where you're paying $21
For two pages.
For two pages.
Is there a way for whenever we get our website up and the viewer installed, to not have Madeir on there? To just pull the information?
I assume that it could be.
I mean, yeah, there are, there are ways to do everything. We would, we'd want to look at what we'd want to do with that, but anything's possible.
The covenants goes with the deed. Where does that come in at? Is that something that somebody will be able to see whenever they look at this?
Yeah, you Oh, go ahead. It might be, yeah, it might be.
And when, when either the clerk and them putting these documents or when they hired us, you know, to go historically scan index these documents, we always would link related documents. So if friends has a deed, reference covenants in that document, is it covenants for this property can be found at this particular page? We reference that and you click that link, go right to those covenants.
So if somebody was to click on, say, an address and then see what covenants is out there also, like size of home and that type of stuff? Is that where it would be?
I would, I would say probably not in that realm. When we talk related documents, it's more about like this where I have a cancellation of
Yeah, I can't read any of that, so.
Okay. What I'm saying is there's a cancellation of a deed to trust and it points back to the deed to trust. That's done in the clerk's office. There's a link made. That would also be found as well.
Like what I, and I've done this before, because when I look for my deeds I had to go back and find my deed and go to the deed before that deed. When I got to the original first deed, that's how I found it, but it took me an hour in the vault to find that.
So in other words, that won't be available most likely.
Well, you can get there if, you know, you just got to, you know.
Or for, for the novice user, it won't be.
Well, this wouldn't cover though, I mean, Greg, your question, I'll go about the pulling up information of what's, so for school district?
Right.
That's going to be a fee then to get that.
Correct, yes.
Then that would be a fee for, but you know, makes it a lot, right. It would make it a lot easier for me to be able to go to that than have for me to keep it in a safe or something like that and all of a sudden, my wife's like, what do we do with it?
I guess that'd be the $29.
Right.
That'd be the minimum one.
Right.
But again, I, again, originally when we came, we were, our target customers, you know, individuals, but our target was, you know, we bucket this to business services who are in that vault every day.
Right. What you got, Carl?
There are a couple of items I'd just like to make sure we understand here because before. We talked about the, the fee. And the fee for somebody like Mr. Moore who uses it a lot and so forth. We had the discussion, what about the citizen that just wanted to look up their deed, get a copy of their deed without having to come downtown to do it? And I think that we had talked about that they could pay the same fee online and came down and got the deed here. Am I correct on that?
We had that discussion, yeah. And I think Richard and Larry and me, in a point, could design it, you know, such as for that.
You could design, I would say to, to make that, you'd probably pay a little bit more because of the convenience fee. And I'm not saying it may be 50 cents a page, but you'd probably
70 cents, yeah.
Well, everything deeds will cost more.
Yes, sir. Austin Harrison County on that, I think they add an additional quarter to it or whatever.
Well, right now, it costs $2, a dollar a page to do that down here, what? 50 cents a page to get your deed.
If we, if we do it from where the records are and the documentation, do it for 25 cents a page.
So in other words, if, just say for me, as a just, I probably use it maybe once a year possibly. So you're looking at maybe a dollar, $1.50 one-time fee instead of like Mr. Moore that uses his, because that's his business, which he would pay the
Right.
At some point, he's got to break even point. Exactly.
Right. And this was designed around to I was about ready to kill me, my staff was too. I didn't just jump out there and do whatever Tom, Dick, and Harry would do. And I wanted to make sure that whatever I provided to the public and mostly to my user, consumer users, my abstractors, too, that would be useful for them, that they could have and use to make their time, make it timely for them and worthy for them to work, you know, to present something out there that they could have, it'd be useful. So this was really mortgage companies, the bankers, the attorneys and, and those, those users as well. But we do get a lot of people walk in. I don't know what our walk-in traffic is, but it's like David said, that if they, we're a fee-based, if they walk in, they want something, they come get it. It's not, it's not a tax or anything of that nature. It's just if they want to see a copy of their deed or whatever.
Right.
And I regret that, you know, you have to drive here to do to that actually furnish the online records free. And I can assure you, he's changing one of them right now to take that away up in DeSoto County and everything. It takes a lot of well, to do that. But I think you'll see that if it was the right, if it was to put them out there free for everything, as Jay would, Jay would know this too, it'd be, you know, you have probably about 80 counties doing it or whatever. But it's part of our expense, it's how we live, that's how we make our, pay our payrolls and things of that nature too. So, but we want to make it convenient for them. I mean, if you want to pull it up and do that, I'm sure there's a way that we can come up to, you know, if they want to when we first started this, putting a website, I don't mind them looking all day long. They can pull it up and look at what it is. It's just when they download, it's when it takes away fees from the office that we use set by statute that run our offices.
Right.
And again, you know, when we set this up, there was no house in the county whatsoever because, you know, we're just like, just like on the recording side. Somebody records and we electronic deliver, they pay us the fee. And, you know, we entered a revenue sharing agreement. But like the example, right now, since we're our business, we don't take credit cards. It's all ACH debit because businesses, you know, that's why Harrison County, if an individual comes in, they pay more per page to the business user because a dollar, you're going to pay 30 cents of that dollar to the, you know, 30 cent one-time transaction plus similar percentage.
Right.
So they charge like 75 cents a page for the one-time user. There are things that we can do, but until we started this conversation, our, you know, from our company standpoint, we were just marketing to the businesses.
Jessica, was you going to tell us something, while you?
I'm sorry.
And the
Well, that was when you were talking about the covenants. We related to them. But when we get newer covenants, they're attached by the lot and block, not by the deed. But if you were to search with the subdivision and the lot number, you would be able to pull the covenants that way.
That we could get like a red neon flashing button that says garbage fee or garbage lien.
Garbage liens are not on there.
Well, it needs to be. Doesn't it? I mean.
They need to be.
Yeah.
They need to show up.
But I, but I guess, and the other point, I think that we had the discussions earlier and you hit on it earlier, Mr. Bishop, is for the someone and get the Madeir. And how do we go about doing that? And we get all the trademarks, that type of stuff. That issue resolved. But we do need to be able to, somebody can click on the county website and get to this information.
Right.
Without having to go through a separate website.
Correct. Well, if it just looked smooth, you know, it could go to another website just as long as it looks.
There's some, there's some things we have to do and even make it more one-time user where they might not even have to go to a search screen like this, so to speak. But those are things we'll need to sit down with Rusty and say, how's the
And our whole goal in the future was to integrate with the, that's what offices are, John and John and I've talked about this for years, to integrate all of the mapping and everything when you go to that webpage, so you pull anything at you, anything you want.
Well, we're probably closer than we ever been.
Probably.
We've been working hard on it.
Yes, sir.
What I'm interested in is getting to who is the current owner of the property. I want to know who and what the mailing address is so I can send them an invoice.
I guess that'll be ready, available then, to be able to look at or how would that
Well, today, I can see the land record in John's, but it's as of the first of the year, not necessarily the current owner. I know I can call your office. I can come down here and see you too. This is going to be there and I can put in a, a screen and see the current owner of the property.
Would that be integrated into that?
Now, from this side, we still, we deal strictly with chancery records that they do not and they don't use a legal description or a subdivision. But I think through some of this stuff, I know I'd have to defer on the tax side if that would be available.
I guess it's the same way that you do, we do it, we're just digitizing what's already a process, you know? The tax rolls are certified once a year. So if you want to go past there, you got to go from that, go to that deed, see if there are any deeds that replace that deed, go through, you know, that's just the way you got to chase that.
I think if we have this available and we tie it in, you click on the address and we can pull up the deed, so there'd be the owner of the property. So your answer is yes, you will be able to find out.
Should be.
And a big able to read it off the screen.
To view it.
To view it.
Yeah.
Right.
That's our plan.
All right.
Anyway, thank y'all for letting us show the demonstration of that. And anything that, you know, we do can help you guys, and of course, we're all in the same business, that's providing a service to our constituencies. So whatever we for them, we'll be happy to do that. But thank y'all this morning for letting us make a demonstration.
Appreciate you, Larry. All right, Mr. Aubrey Hayes from Mill Creek.
Yes.
How you doing, sir?
I'm good. My name's Aubrey Hayes. I live at 42 Mill Run Road. This morning, I'd like to talk to you about Mill Creek. Three problems or three issues. There's Mill Creek itself, there's the ditch, and then there's about Mill Creek, y'all had a project that's never been finished. And that is to stabilize the banks of Mill Creek. I'm particularly interested about the West Bank. I have eight houses in my subdivision where this stabilization has not occurred. And I've been listening very closely to the budget plans and I don't hear any plan. Now, what's happening to these eight houses is there's a tremendous amount of erosion occurring because of the development of Castlewood. In addition to that, last year, the county had a culvert collapse over on the East Bank in Mill Creek, Fuller. And rather than replace water up to a retention pond and then spilled into Mill Creek. The county drove straight through into Mill Creek with a culvert that's upstream from these eight houses and it's creating even more of an erosion problem. Because they're dumping the stormwater straight out of Mill Creek, Fuller. To hear what your plan is to commit, complete that project of stabilizing that bank.
Where did that start?
Huh?
Long time ago.
It's a long time ago. The last time you worked on it was three years ago, when you received a $250,000
Grant.
Grant from the federal government. I myself
Are we waiting on, are we waiting on?
But I don't know anything that requires you to have to have federal money to do maintenance on something you're responsible for. First thing I want to talk about is the ditch. Now Larry Swales is here and he's responsible for the ditch. He was the supervisor at that time. He came and he promised us the county would eight houses, they back up to the ditch. And when I moved there, that ditch was about four foot deep and about six foot wide and it kind of meanders through a 40-foot strip of land that the county owns. After it was done, that ditch was 40 foot wide, 17 foot deep behind my house. Larry asked us to give a five-foot easement so the county could maintain that ditch. I didn't necessarily give him an easement, but I did move my fence because he tore it down. And I had to rebuild it myself and I built it five foot off of the end of my property line. Today, the rocks from the ditch are almost at least three or four feet there. You're not doing maintenance on that ditch. If you went up to Grants Ferry Road this morning and looked up that ditch and the bottom of it, you'd see grass growing two or three foot deep. So there hasn't been anybody in there cutting out the vegetation either.
Is this along the road?
From Grants Ferry Road looking east.
But it's along the road.
Middle of the subdivision. The reason that I think The reason that I think the ditch was enhanced with this was to create a drainage. On the west side of Grants Ferry Road, there used to be a kind of a marsh. And after this ditch got enhanced, that drained out, and now they're building the gardens of manship over on the west side where it used to be kind of swampy. But even so, the ditch, when they dug it out, they lined it with a rubber rug, a rug, and covered the rug up with rocks. Now, the rug has rotted out, and there's not a house on that 28 houses that are not having some sort of erosion problem. The county engineer's been looking at it. Would you like to make a comment on what you found?
No.
No comment?
That's correct.
I didn't, I wasn't aware we actually maintained ditches anywhere.
It's your property. Where my property line ends to the other property line, it's county land.
Mr. Slade, would you like to weigh-
Unless I'm thinking about completely different areas.
Right.
The property is reserved-
Let, let-
Yeah, let me, let me, let me give you a little history on that ditch. And I don't mean to bore you with the specifics, but I think it's important. We had a board meeting on a Friday, one Friday, and we had a visitor come in, Mr. the Honorable and the late- with our engineers, the, some SCS projects that now is called the, what do they call it? They changed their federal name, but SCS projects- Yeah, and all, but they were projects you could apply for and get federal funding on and do matching funding with the county to make improvements to areas that looked, that had erosion problems. And we had had several complaints on- the late veterinarian that died, I can't think of his name, all the property up there-
Hugh Ward.
Oh, Hugh Ward it had, and comes to Bob Stewart's property, and he came on down the ditch to the, what I call the central feeder ditch, it came out of the, out of the Castlewoods area. Saturday morning, I get a phone call from Son Montgomery saying, do you want that project? I said, I do want that project. And he presented that project to the board, and my board graciously accepted- did an SCS project on that, on that ditch and everything. Now, what my understanding is, and he's incorrect to me making promises, I only do what the board allows us to do, or the law allows us to- SCS project or any project of that nature, you will maintain it after you, if you do use the federal monies and do it, you will maintain that project from duration for, you know, just keeping it cut and that, and things of that nature. So, there wasn't a promise made, it was what the law intended for it to be done. So, correct that as well. The ditch was done, it maintained, it was a great project, and then, of course, then we came later on and started on the bit. Was initiated, and you guys have continued to be involved in it. I don't know if that project's completed or not, I don't, I don't live dev over in that business anymore, but, and all that. But that is the history of it. It was an SCS project. It was a very good project, it was a very worthy project, and it was to be maintained by the county, because that is the nature of, you know, accepting SCS project.
So, if that's federal monies to it, that we have to continually maintain those ditches for-
Yeah, that's kind of, that's part of your agreement, if I remember right, SCS and any federal project of that nature, they give you the money, you must maintain it and all, and also keep the grass-
Is that also through NRCS, the same?
That would be the same, that would be, that's the same.
Yes, and then, you need to look into that.
They just change the name, but a new name for it.
Yeah, there's several, because I know there's several ditches that we do have-
Creek, and I'd ever have understood this, that when I came into office innocently and didn't know what was going on, what I was doing, unique about Mill Creek was, there was some, Mill Creek was the only one, if you looked in the minutes, that said- the only subdivision in the whole county. Now, don't ask me how that happened, I don't know, it was written in the minutes. And Buster and I, and the attorneys, looked at it many a time, but, and they've done a job. We've replaced main culverts that run off of the backside of the, you know, through the subdivisions and down into the, between houses and things of that nature, because we had the authority to do it. I mean, that's, that was written in there to do that, but it, it- the dollars on drainage in Mill Creek and all that, so.
I would think millions.
Sir, yeah, probably, so Jay. We've had to, we've had to do a lot of things that would, you know, just really crazy and all, but to get-
Well, that was the next thing I was gonna bring up. My third thing is Mill Creek itself and the drainage. In some places in Mill Creek, let's go back and I'll- supervisors accepting Mill Creek and its drainage for maintenance. Now, I've been told by the developer and by one of the supervisors- the roads and the drainage was transferred to the county, and the county is responsible for maintenance. And I can give you a case after case in the neighborhood where the county has gone in and replaced the culvert or repaired the culvert, and then I can give you a case recent, it was last month, where the county has denied responsibility- they picked one culvert out of all the other culverts in the subdivision to not maintain is questionable. Who owns the culvert? If it runs in a drainage easement between two houses? Can you tell me that?
Well, I've always been told, every time I try to get it fixed, the homeowner association-
committed to providing the county with a culvert to drain a street. All of this is to move storm water off the street. Take it to- more than a drain box. Y'all have four and a half miles of road in my subdivision with associated curbs and gutters, drain boxes, culverts, ditches, flues. There's a multitude of things that move storm water out of that neighborhood. And you've heard Larry say, not only did they spend money to repair- repair damage to a foundation of a house where culvert run. Okay? And now, why they picked on one culvert?
Let me clarify that too. As you well know, and I know, the drainage on, you know, curb to curb or back ditch, back of the ditch, back of the ditch is county, is what we maintain. The reason that those drainages are- has damaging back up on the street, you have the authority to place it upon the minutes, and you can make those repairs, and that's how those repairs were made.
Right.
And everything too, so. And for the parts of roads in there, the roads in there probably, and I've probably been played once, at least maybe twice, some of the roads in there have, and all, but let me say, he said back in 1975, you know, I didn't come into 88. I'm gonna say this, that that subdivision, because of the non, on the books, any, any regulations or whatever, back in 75 and prior, even when I got here, there really wasn't hardly any subdivision- on the back, and continue to pat you guys on the back in proving those, because back then, you could develop a neighborhood, probably just, you know, it wasn't any regulations, you'd just go in and make your neighborhood.
Right.
And then, when we got into, as Buster and I did, and George Bobo and others, we got into making those findings and everything, we'd find that a lot of the culverts were not even, not even, didn't even have a band around, wasn't tied together. So, as you can see- because that's, that's when it was, that was the timing of it and everything, not to blame anybody, it's just that we didn't have the enforcement nor the rules and regulations on the books at the time, in order to properly address what needed to be addressed. And that, you know, you found those issues, and then we had to go in and make repairs behind them and everything. And knowing, knowing that when they put them in by the previous developer or whatever, that they would fail. I mean, because, you know, as well as I do, they would. But, but I think accordingly, as we came along, and with our help and you guys' help and the boards, all the other boards, that we've made great strides in improvement and make- they won't last forever, but the longevity of them will be there for longer than it used to be.
Correct.
I think it's important to point out as well, that we're talking about development that has a 40-year history.
Yeah.
And so, it can be anticipated that infrastructure in a 40-year-old development is gonna show its age, and it does. We have a different interpretation of what the county has undertaken in terms of its documented responsibility. The minutes from 1975 reflect, certain language in it, and it's subject to interpretation. You know, if a court tells the county that it undertook responsibility for maintenance, then I think the board would be in a position then to honor that interpretation. That's never been done. And so, where we are, from a legal standpoint, is following the Attorney General's opinions. They very clearly tell us that unless we can make specific and certain documented findings about potential damage to what we do know for a fact that the county is undertaking maintenance of, and that's our streets and our curb and gutter, and that's everything that's drainage oriented that lies within the right of play, unless we can show documented damage, potential damage to those facilities. And the long and short of it is, there never was a document, ever, transferring title to drainage easements within Mill Creek to the county at any point. There's a minute entry, it's subject to interpretation, and that's where we are. So, what we do, what I've been doing since I've been Attorney for the Board- that we're talking about private property, and we need to figure out whether or not there's a basis for this board to find that we ought to enter upon that private property to avoid damage to what we know we can be on.
And you know, with all that said, I understand your situation, but we have this all over the county, same, similar situations. I hear it, and I'm sure everybody else does, in different areas, so.
Well, what is the drainage easement? And who owns the culvert?
Again, and again, this is public comments, it's really not time for a lot of direction on these things. Clearly, when the development comes online, the streets are laid out, the drainage easements are laid out, and what goes to the county for maintenance purpose- clearly define what the county's taking responsibility for. That hasn't changed.
And we have that, excuse me, that is shown on the plaque.
That's correct.
What is dedicated to Rankin County.
Right.
And of course, Craig has done- has been on board as a full-time county attorney. Any of these issues that come up, and Dale and I feel like there's a need, Craig is pretty gracious to stomp out there with us and take a look at it, you know, and we look to see if there's any road damage being caused by the drainage issue, because people are always gonna find holes in the yard when there's real old- and then Craig advises us correctly, in my opinion, what we can go in there and maintain and what we cannot. And if that decision is no, then Dale moves on to another problem.
We had a similar situation just a couple weeks ago, when Mr. Parker, Ms. Westbrook, and an independent engineer came out and looked at the- it was a similar situation, but it was all on private issues, and it was really nothing we could do to help. The independent engineer described it and explained, and actually explained to them what we had done was all that we could do.
Mr. Hayes, I guarantee you, we would rather fix every one of them, you know, especially if we get elected by you guys.
And it's strange that you can fix some and you can't fix others.
Yeah, I don't think it's fair we fix Mill Creek, we can't fix my neighborhoods.
Well, if you take my neighborhood, I got, I got curbs and gutter on three and four places in my subdivision where there is no curb and gutter. It's been removed for some reason and never replaced. What about that? Do I get the county to do that?
I'm up for it.
We, we have responsibility over the streets, the curb and gutter, and the associated drainage up to a point. Generally speaking, the plaque's gonna lay it out for us, how far off of that curb we can get. In other words, that's what street right of play-
Mr. Hayes, and I know you're very passionate about this, I've heard you several different times, but what we're gonna do is, I'm gonna get our county engineer, our attorney, and our road manager, we'll get together with you again, and let's see what we can do to, what we can legally, legally do.
Is and what isn't.
Right.
And I can tell the folks.
Exactly.
Okay? And then they can take their, take their show on the road and do something different if they want to.
Let's get us sit down with you, and let's see what we can at least legally-
Item I'd like to make-
Yes.
Is a request y'all budget or a work order tracking system. The county, time after time, I've turned in road order, these, these-
Work orders.
Work orders.
Yes, sir, we're working-
And they go into a black hole of Calcutta. Sometimes they get done, and sometimes they don't. When they don't get done, I'd like to-
Okay, can I say this?
Other than that, I thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. All right, moving on, we've got the whole business, the minutes approval for July 15th and July 22nd, 2014.
Most approved.
And a motion by Mr. Morrison, and second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Consent agenda items?
Most approved.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr.- opposed, like sign, motion carries. Ms. Judy Fortenberry, task collector.
She's not here.
Well, okay.
Hey, Laura, I know I asked you about this last week, are we expecting this to be a lot of charges? Are we gonna do this a lot? I mean, I don't understand why we didn't just put this on consent agenda.
I don't either. I mean, I didn't know that Judy wasn't gonna be here. This is just a one-time per year charge.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Mr. John Sullivan. Good morning.
Good morning. Regular items, item A, petitions change the assessment, 2013 real and personal property assessment rule.
Most approved.
Second. And a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Item B, void 2013 tax sale for PIN number 38767, 38768. It matured to the state and should have been coded tax exempt.
Most approved.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
And item C, void 2012 and 13 tax sale, refund tax sale first for PIN number 36068, and get the tax collector to issue a new statement.
Most approved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
And then, item D, we're just gonna acknowledge that we have received the objections for the 2014 tax assessment. I think there's 13 formal-
Have you dealt with any of those yet?
We, we are, yes, and we are dealing with them, and hope- come here, the August 15th board meeting. It usually is, we usually work through these well.
Yeah.
But this year, there will be some unhappy people that, right now, we haven't come to an agreement.
Okay.
Most approved.
And I don't see it happen.
And a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you, John. Ms. Bridget Herring, purchasing clerk.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have one item, I'm requesting approval of a copier contract with Rico for purchasing is replacing my existing lease that's about to expire.
We may think about this a little while.
I got a motion by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dale Westbrook's, road manager.
Motion approved, road work accomplished for July, road work scheduled for August 14th. Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? Dale, what's, Mr. Albert brought up a good question on, I know you're moving forward on getting a work order. I think you're working on some kind of work order.
Hopefully, he looks at another one. That one was like
A little less than that. The last was Rusty was wanting some technical information from the company, and I hooked him up, so I haven't heard from him.
Okay, so we are in the process of moving forward then. Okay, great. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Charles Parker, county consulting engineer. Good morning.
Thank you. Is a request approval of utility permit for Southern Pine Electric Power Association to construct a power line along across East Mountain Creek Road and install between Highway four sixty-nine and Laughlin Road.
Most approved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? We're in line now with everything, I guess.
Joining us now as far as utility permits, and that issue has been hopefully resolved.
Do we have a few already?
Part of the team then, right?
With the exception of
Any more questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item I have on the agenda is SAP sixty-one sixteen M, which is our large overlay project. And I'm requesting approval of a supplemental agreement number one and change order request number one, and authority for the president to sign the documents. Is in our overlay project, our big overlay project, you know, five million dollar overlay project. We had a section of Holly Bush Road in there that were in the plans, and during that time from design and state aid and so forth and so on, Rankin County went in and overlaid this section of the road. So they requested, state requested that we move this to another section of Holly Bush Road, since that's what it was dedicated for, which is on the west end of Holly Bush Road. So that's what, that's what all this is for.
You sure made that confusing. It's wood. Yeah, that works out.
We're just basically, it did a really confusion. It goes from one end of the Holly Bush Road to the other end, because the end that was set up and all the plan got overlaid in the interim time.
We overlaid a state A road.
The county did?
Yeah, well, that happens sometimes. That's not Well, I don't recall.
Parts of it, man, man, I don't remember.
Most approved.
And a motion by Mr. Bishop. Second. I was fixing to say, I was fixing to dive for the leg with second, but it looks like Mr. Morrison came in. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our Willa Grant two, phase two subdivision development. I'm recommending approval of the final plat, and we have a bond in the amount of twenty-three thousand two hundred and five dollars. So I'm just recommending approval of that final plat.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions?
Where is this?
Castle Woods.
It's out of Castle Woods, kind of down at the end of Castle Woods Boulevard.
Way in the back.
Yeah, way down there.
Almost goes to four seventy-one.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is a request approval of utility permit for telepack network known as C-Spar to construct a hundred and forty-four strand fiber optic cable along across Piscatah Road and install between Piscatah High Road and Mississippi forty-three.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item that I have is requesting approval of a utility permit for telepack network known as C-Spar to construct a hundred and forty-four strand fiber optic cable along across Mary Crapp's Road and install between Mississippi forty-one and the highway of one eighty-eight, Mary Crapp's Road.
Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Morrison. Questions?
Mr. Parker, the old Highway forty-three project, that won't interfere with this any, will it?
No.
Well, we have it in there now. If it does, they got to move it at their cost, right?
Yes, and then the new permits, thanks to your attorney, I hate to give him credit for anything, but that, now, any of the permits they need to be relocated for the county to do improvements. They have to do it.
All right. Any more questions?
Well, in all likelihood, they'll be through with this work and have it covered up before we get to the old Highway forty-three deal with drainage.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you. The last item that I have is Whitlow Storm Drainage Improvements. I'm recommending approval of pay request number two to Parkland Woodward Contractors, Inc. Fourteen cents and requesting authority to issue that check.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Slay, board attorney.
Mr. President, item A under that we need to go ahead and publish notice of the election for September twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen, in a newspaper of general circulation that includes that portion of Rankin County owned by the Pearl River Valley Water Supply District. As you guys know, we talked about this at the work session, this election is mandated by Mississippi law, House Bill eight thirty-six. This board has no discretion in the setting of by greater than twenty percent of the residents who own property, I'm sorry, of residents own property owned by the Pearl River Valley Water Supply District in Rankin County, where that petition requests an election on the question of whether the property, the PRV property, will be afforded qualified resort status under Mississippi law. Again, you do not have discretion to set the election. You set the election on the work session. This the publication prepared for your signature, Mr. President, upon approval by the board to go ahead and publish this. It'll be published on a weekly basis, beginning this Wednesday and continuing until or instructs as to the date of the election, the place of the election, the time of the election, the polling place, open hour, close hour, the fact that absentee balloting will be authorized and will begin on August the eighth, which is forty-five days prior to the election, and that Ms. Becky's office will be open on two Saturdays preceding the election. Vote in this election are people who actually live on PRV property in Rankin County. Those registered voters are the only ones who will be able to participate. It's not a county-wide election. Therefore, there's only one polling place that's going to be at the Reservoir Community Center. The election commissioners are going to run the election and control the balloting and take care of so it'll, obviously, it'll be continued. You will receive some notice of the certification of the election at that time. So what you're doing today is you're authorizing the publication of required notice.
But the funding is held, I mean, picked up by
Yes, sir, there is a, there's a contract in place between the Reservoir Foundation Incorporated, which is a private non reservoir. They were responsible for going out and getting the petition secured. They entered into a contract with your circuit clerk to handle all costs associated with the election.
Okay, wonderful. All right, do I have a motion to set this or go ahead and publish notice for the election September twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen? Got a motion by Mr. Morrison. Second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? Just want to clarify exactly what Mr. Morrison said. It'd be no cost to Rankin County citizens except for the PRV people.
Whatever costs are incurred by the county associated with the election are reimbursed by the Reservoir Foundation Incorporated.
That's including the legislature commissioners?
Yes, sir. The entirety of the costs of the election are covered.
Okay.
All right, and we have no say-so. Basically, we have to, I mean, this is a
We already voted on this, right? I mean, we're just doing publication now.
It's the publication.
Publication, right. Okay. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Mr. President, item B, under my section of the agenda is the public hearing for the James Alford conditional use with dimensional variance request at fifteen eighty-four Old Fanon Road. This is District Two property. Mr. Alford is requesting a conditional use to construct an indoor shooting range and training center at fifteen eighty-four Old Fanon Road. This will be in addition to the existing Pond Masters Building. The training center and classroom will be in the upper level. The shooting range will be located in the lower level, which is underground. This is a one-point acre parcel that is Zone C two. This is in Mr. Wood's district. And Mr. Buster has already approved the revised drainage plan that was submitted. So we're not going to be
Well, it's all on you.
So at this time, we'll open the public hearing on the James Alford request. I'll ask if there's anyone to speak in opposition to the James Alford conditional use and dimensional variance request. Anyone to speak in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone speaking, rising to speak in opposition. It'd be appropriate to take action.
Okay, as you noticed, Mr. Wood Brown is not here. It's in his district, and I guess as Buster, you've already talked to Wood. Everything good to go on your end and as far as the attorney?
I make motion to approve the dimensional variance.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Mr. President, item C is the proposed textual amendments to the Rankin County zoning ordinance and then potential action on that. You will recall at the work session, we discussed the textual amendments that were being proposed. As part of that discussion, the board requested that we reconsider the and so we've taken these, any reference to the bees has been removed from that section. And we listed out the actual zoning districts where livestock and wild animals, as those are defined in the ordinance, are prohibited. And so if you look at the textual amendments that are being proposed now, I'll draw your attention to what is listed as livestock and what is listed as wild is gone, as discussed. And then under sections four sixteen, the proposed amendment of both livestock and wild animals are prohibited from being kept, harbored, raised, or permitted to run at large on any property in a platted residential subdivision zoned R one, R one B, R one C, R one D, R three, MHS, I don't even know what that is. Mobile home subdivision, and then residential mix. And so all of those zones are covered now by the textual amendments where livestock and wild animals would be prohibited.
So
Residential mix.
So R one, though, I would rather do it on the dense, denser areas, but
R one's going to pick up anything that is fourteen, eleven, five square foot, foot on your lot or higher. That's about a quarter acre, Jay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not real big.
That's only in platted subdivision.
Yes, sir.
Just in platted subdivision.
That's correct.
So you can't even have a monkey, huh?
Yes. Do y'all have any other questions about what's in front of you now before I open the public hearing?
Yeah, I got one. What will we do, or is there anything in the case of
Yeah.
multiple beehives that are in a area?
Yes, sir. Those would eventually, Jared, fall into the question is, what would we do? We being obviously the county.
We, I mean, what's going to happen?
It would eventually rise to the level of a nuisance that would fall under our general nuisance ordinance, and we would probably take a run at controlling it that way. But we don't have a specific zoning, this is about zoning. We would not have a specific zoning contact, context to approach that.
One thing, but then when they grow to, you know, they don't take consideration where they're living, and they grow to ten.
Well, you almost have, you almost have then a commercial business, wouldn't you? I mean, wouldn't that be almost a, I mean, why would you have that?
Unless they're offering honey for sale out of their house.
Unless all taxes are
And, you know, your ordinance under animal actions on the number of animals that can be housed, but, you know, at some point, you're going to get into the issue of vagueness, Jared, about those being insects.
Well, another thing, and your response was Hayes on four weighted, and where. And I know of a situation that's sitting out there, is reading, I'm asking this.
Yes, sir. Well, there's different ways to control it, Jared, what, what we discussed on the thirty-first of the work session.
Right, and I agree with you. I agree.
We took it away from a zoning control and regulation, and now we're going to have to rely on some other regulation. The private have the ability to assert a private nuisance violation in court. They have that right. But your question was specifically, what would we do? And unless we take, unless we take that on as in the nature of a public nuisance, then the answer is we would not have any way to regulate that.
Because, you know, it just comes down to having a little common sense and respect for your neighbor and where you live.
Yes, sir.
And that's what's the situation that I'm
So what are we going to do, though, if, say, if somebody has a chicken coop in their backyard currently? So what happens to these people now that we pass this ordinance?
It really depends on how you guys prefer to address that. There is no requirement of grandfathering. This is a land use control. You can say, if you would like, to amend these textual amendments to state that this will go into effect within so many days after it's adopted, which would give us an opportunity then to address some of our known issues by sending out a letter, written communication, saying, hey, they've adopted and updated zoning ordinance, you're going to be out of compliance. You've got ninety days, you've got a hundred and eighty days to get into compliance, whatever. You guys specifically control how you want to handle that, but there's no requirement that you guys grandfather anybody in. But what we anticipated was that we would adopt these regulations and they would go into effect immediately.
Then you got to figure out exactly, like what you're saying, is how do they get rid of them, you know, because, I mean, some of these feel like that they're, that is their pets.
Right. We're going to use common sense.
Right.
Obviously. There is a delay associated with moving forward with and John are going to have to put them on notice that they're in violation of a new zoning ordinance, okay? So there's a time period associated with that. If they don't comply, then there is a zoning violation which gets transmitted up to the justice court, and that's going to take time. So there'll be a natural delay for folks to get into compliance.
And their department will do the enforcement.
On zoning ordinance.
Right.
But this would have to be a platted subdivision.
That's correct.
Because, you know, we're going to have a lot of areas that fall in the same category that are not platted.
That's correct.
Because they were never platted, they're old.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President, we need to open that public hearing.
All right.
Jay, you got another?
Well, I just know some people that, you know, they have like two or three chickens laying eggs, you know, that they keep, that it's not a nuisance. Of course, I don't live by them, but them, but I just hate seeing these come.
I'm not so sure that, you know, if people don't, if you don't know about it, there's no way you would know. I mean, most of the times, whenever it gets to us or them, that's when it's really brought to the forefront. So, I mean, unless it's ever brought up, you never know it.
So right off the bat, how many are we going to get hit with?
Well, we're not going out looking for them. If we get a complaint, then we work.
At least have some teeth.
Well, I assume there's a reason why we're addressing this now.
Oh, yeah.
Are we talking horses, pigs, chickens, goats?
Chickens, ducks.
Pigs.
Pigs.
Yep.
And bees. You know, the bees aren't in there, but we have had some complaints on the bees and the pests.
And I've had no teeth for them to be able to do anything with.
I just want to be prepared for what's coming.
Jay, for the most part, you're, the newer subdivisions that are online are going to have restricted covenants that control this anyway. So...
Well, I have no problem doing it from here forward. It's just the ones that are there now that...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. At this time, Mr. President, at this time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the proposed text changes with respect to the Rankin County zoning ordinance. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition to the proposed amendments. This time, it'd be appropriate to take action on the proposed amendments.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve these text amendments to the Rankin County zoning ordinance as proposed. Motion by myself. Is this, is there any way to insert some language in there that, and I know you're waiting on, well, let me second it so there can be some discussion.
Got a motion by Mr. Johnson, so we need some questions.
Discussion? Yes, I have a question.
I know you did.
Can we insert some language that says, I mean, this person that has two or three chickens, if they're not bothering anybody, and, I mean...
It sounds stupid, but, you know.
Insert some language in... And that's what spurred the investigation?
Well...
I mean, obviously, that's what's going to happen.
Yes. And the answer from legal is, no, sir, there's not any way to insert some language that says, you're okay unless somebody calls and complains. I'm sorry, but it doesn't work that way.
Can they build a higher fence?
Yes. That the way to insert the language that you see here is for it to be adopted. The modifications could be something along the lines of the effective date of these text changes to give us some time, even if folks are complaining, that we can say they go into effect on thus and so date, and then we will tend to... Know that they're going to have to correct the situation over time. They will have time. That would be one suggestion that would soften the blow, so to speak. But we won't be able to say, you're good unless somebody complains. We won't be able to do that.
August 4th, 2015.
It would be kind of like saying, well, you're really not in violation if you're speeding.
They didn't get you a radar.
So, um...
Take that one in the tax assessment, cancel the bees.
The what?
Yeah, that's right.
I think that'd be a great idea.
Individually. And the eggs, you know.
Has any more questions? You got any suggestions on a time that you might want to, if you want to propose a time?
No. Lawyer shut them down.
It's my fault.
All right.
So subdivision that's, has three or more acres is not going to be a...
That would be an R1A. Correct.
RE1 and RE1A, minimum lot size is an acre. So if they had an acre.
But those are not controlled.
But now if they're speeding and raising animals...
Right.
So RE1?
It's not included.
Huh?
It's not in here.
Okay.
RE1's not in here. RE1A is not in there. So even if they have subdivisions, if they are zoned RE1 or RE1A, they are not covered by the zoning ordinance.
Correct. Just the ones listed.
It's the more dense, tightly compacted areas.
All right. Any more questions?
What is Robin Hood?
REX.
It's what?
REX.
So they're permitted there?
No, they're not permitted.
Oh, no, they're the last one.
And they are platted. All right. Any more questions? You got some questions, Mr. Johnson? Any more questions?
What's, well, and this is hard here. We just got through doing one with chickens. But it was already, I mean, it's RE, it's RE mixed.
I think that guy still has ducks.
Well, they just come off the water.
I think it's RE1B.
Is that on here?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yep.
Any more questions? Is this something that will stem from a nuisance property violation where they had animals?
There were complaints associated with some of the language that you see here. Yes, sir.
It just didn't fall out of the air.
Yes.
So if we grandfather them, could they still bring in a nuisance to us?
Oh, we can grandfather.
Or if we grandfather?
They could, as long as it can be established that the violation occurred after the date of the adoption of the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, grandfather.
I don't see a grandfather.
All right, let's move on.
All right. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Okay.
Always do. Live with a house full of women.
I kind of like mine, so.
Moving quickly to item D. Item D. Item D. We're going to set a public hearing for August the 15th at 9:00 for the replacement of the official zoning map.
Okay.
I make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bishop. Set that public hearing. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Mr. President, items E through I. Various requests, conditional use, dimensional variance, and others for the same date and time, September 2, 2014, 9:00 a.m. Mike Rosier, P&amp;Q Developers, Jeanette Patrick, Timothy and Aura Johnson, and CIA Autoplex. I would ask for one motion for items E through I to set that public hearing September 2, 9:00 a.m.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr.... All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Very well done there, Mr. Slade. Thank you. Mr. Stringer, County Administrator.
Okay, one item, Mr. President, that's recognition of a petition that we received in support of construction, a fire station in the shallow area near the intersection of Shallow Road and John's Shallow Road. We, you have already approved that. So I just wanted to bring this petition forward and recognize that we have a petition in support of what the board has already approved.
Now my motion would be appended to our minutes. Motion by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? What's the time table? What are we looking at as far as starting construction on this?
I, we got both the... Our guy here with us, and I think they've already gone out and laid off and surveyed the area.
It's, if I might, it's, Engineering Services has laid out the property coming, and we've got, we've got some easements that we've got, but there's the old microwave structure that's there. It's a holding place, concrete structure, and I'm trying to secure a machine now to demolish it. Because we checked to see if we put the building in some other locations and not have to demolish the structure, but we can't get all of the parking we need and everything. So we're hoping next week, so we'll have a machine secured to alter demolition of that structure.
Okay.
So we can move forward. I think I already secured some steel material at close proximity to the plant.
Wonderful. Okay. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay, additional business to be discussed?
Budget.
Budget.
I had one question before we started budget, and I see a gentleman here with AMR, and I would like to ask him a question. Friday at approximately noon, I received a call about there had been some kind of a go-kart accident or something on North Brandon, in North Brandon Estates, on North Brandon Boulevard.
Yes, sir.
I understand there was a 40-minute response time before...
No, sir, it wasn't.
The actual transport vehicle got here, and the sprint truck did get there.
Yes, sir. I was on scene within 10 minutes, and my ambulance was on scene within 20, just a little more than 20. I'm not sure.
23.
Yeah, 23. It was, it was really close to 20 minutes. There were, or either five other calls going on in the county at the time. I can go back and look, but...
And I don't mean to put you on the spot.
But no, 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 that's fine.
You don't have all that data in front of you, but...
Right. I know I was on scene in under 10, or right at 10 minutes. I know that's one of our 15-minute zones, so I was on scene really quick. And for the unit that had left Baptist that was coming towards Rankin County anyway, they were coming towards Brandon. For them to make it over there as quick as they did to the area of the county they did, it was 22 minutes. That was a pretty quick response for them, so.
Come from where?
They had just left Baptist, and they were coming back towards Brandon. I don't know exactly where they started from when the call originated. Like I say, I know they were coming back this way to cover anyway. Because if I'm remembering the timeframe right, there was a unit sitting in Brandon that had caught a call, and they were backfilling to cover where that unit had left. So I don't, like I say, I'm not real sure how far along or how far down the road they had made it, but I know that they had left metro area over there, because they had just cleared from one of the hospitals in that area. So...
Well...
Like I say, I knew, I was on scene right behind the fire department, and the individual who I'm sure you got a phone call from was complaining and saying that it took the fire truck 20 minutes to get there. I'm sorry, it didn't.
Eric, when you get there, what, what all are you able to do?
Anything that ambulance can do.
Okay.
Fully ALS incorporated, I can take care of any advanced life-saving measures that I need to take care of.
So on your sprint truck, you've got a lot of, I guess, all of the...
I am just short of an ambulance. I'm just short of a stretcher in the back of my ambulance.
You just can't transport.
Just can't transport. But the problem with that one was, it wouldn't have mattered how quick they could have gotten there. Those 10, 11, 12 minutes that I spent on scene before they got there, had the ambulance been there in 10 minutes, they would have spent 10, 11, 12 minutes getting that patient ready to transport.
So you were...
Prepared for transport. So then you would have got a complaint that we sat on scene too long.
Well...
I mean, not to, not to say it that way, but because, I mean, it, it takes a few minutes to get a patient stabilized and get them ready and being able to transport and transport them. I mean, you know, get them ready to transport, so.
Especially one like that, where there was bleeding out of the ears and...
The patient's condition due to HIPAA laws and regulations, but that is, I can't comment on that. But...
And that's full blown, where they have to be secured?
Yes, sir.
The whole neck and the whole nine yards without going into detail?
And there were some speculations on scene from some of the bystanders that will retain the statement that they were... Then, and if you're standing 10, 15, 20 feet away, you may see something and not understand what you're looking at. So I won't say that that is a completely accurate description. You may not have gotten a completely accurate description of the events that happened. But like I say, that was... So, and I was trying this morning before I came in here to actually get an update on that patient, and just don't have a contact for them yet. So. Did you happen to, for that family, that I can follow up with?
No, but I have a name.
Of the patient?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I know the patient's father, I believe, just because of work. I believe he used to be an ER nurse at UMC. So I'm familiar with him just through work relations, but I just haven't been able to get in touch with him yet. So, like I say, I want to follow up.
I haven't had an update this morning, but anyway, I just wanted to hear your side of the story and, and, you know...
It's, it's funny. While I was on scene, it was a statement that it took them 30 minutes to get there. It's funny to hear that it has escalated to 40 minutes by the time you bring it to me.
Yeah.
I mean...
Next week will be 60.
Well, it does seem forever when you're standing there, I'm sure.
And it really does. I mean, it was a, it was for a bystander that's not medically trained, that's not an emergency personnel. It was a, it looked bad. I'm not going to deny that. It did. It looked bad. And if you're standing on the side of the road with someone, you know, and they're...
Bad shape.
I mean, if they look to be in bad shape to you, five minutes is going to seem like 40. It's just the way it is. So really.
Okay. Appreciate you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Any more additional business to be discussed?
Yep. I want to bring up some recent business. This, still, we just passed. This ordinance thing.
You want to repeal the ordinance?
I need, I want to ask some questions, something else about it. I mean, I'm...
See if you start right now.
If you lived, like, let's just say, well, Robin Hood, and you've got two chickens that you're getting eggs off of, you can't have those chickens.
You've got pretty accomplished.
I'll answer, I'll answer that.
Huh?
I mean, I'll answer that. If, you know, it's kind of like the sheriff. The sheriff can't know everything. We can't know everything that's going on out there, out in the county. Is it legal to have pit bulls? You know, sure it is. If you go through the hoops and everything else. Are there pit bulls out there that are not? Sure, we know there are.
So we're going to come up with ordinance to have chickens?
No, I'm just saying.
As long as they're cooped.
If you don't know about, I mean, if you don't know about it, and we never hear about it, I mean, there's really no way.
They...
I'm just saying.
Rabbits in a pen. They weren't listed.
They're not listed because they don't...
Because they're not listed, they're okay.
They don't wake folks up at 4:30 a.m.
Right.
I don't know. I don't know about this.
Those are roosters.
I think the chickens make noise, but not as much.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, you...
About the chickens?
Right.
I'm right, but it wasn't two. It wasn't two. It was a whole...
But where do you stop? Do you say one or two, or do you say 20, or what's the, what's the magic number? That's the problem, where you get to. Because one, I can tell you, one rooster at 2:00 in the morning would aggravate me to death.
Well, they was on...
Y'all had my mom's rooster.
It's time to get up anyways. It's daylight.
I mean, I, you know, it's, it's one of those things that...
I'm just thinking of...
I guess it's not a nuisance unless it's, you live next door to it.
I'm just thinking of the different areas. Places like Robin Hood and places like Plantation Shores. I mean, they're not as... But they're falling in that same category. I mean, you can have, the thing about it, you can have a dog. It'd be just as nuisance as a rooster.
Well, if it lives.
Shut up all night long. One dog.
So we're going to add dogs to this? Just barking ones.
Just barking ones.
Um?
Chickens with no voices.
Yeah.
How many parents can a dog bark?
Hmm?
All right, we going to have a work session after this for budget?
Well, I don't know. I'm trying to figure out if they're still continuing. You got any more questions on that one?
No, I just don't know if I'm, I'm for that. And I think it's going to open up some problems for us.
No doubt about it.
I like to put it back on the agenda.
Let's see how it works.
Hmm?
Let's see how it goes.
No, I don't, I think I want my name off of... Yeah.
I don't know, it's in there. It's in blood.
I, I think we're going, I, I think it needs to be, I just, I don't know, I, I don't know, there's just areas in there that I'm not so sure we, we're seeing. I don't know, because I think it's some issues that we're not seeing there.
That's why you said anything that, I mean, I know you've run that rabbit for...
Well, there's a couple of different thoughts that I have, um...
Well, can't we, if we start having a flood of things, we can repeal the ordinance.
All right.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's not...
Absolutely.
We've seen things we've had to back...
Let's not talk about it.
Why?
I don't want to do this. I wasn't talking about you, I was talking about him bringing it up.
Old stuff that we have taken off.
He was brewing up some old, we need left buried.
They do.
With initials N R A.
Correct. And have you heard any more problems on that?
I don't know.
No.
Not that I'm aware of.
So, oh, we got a sidebar going on. All right, any more, uh, additional business on that? Anything? All right, so we need to discuss, uh, budget items or, because the last I understood that we were going to be meeting on Wednesday, is that correct? Or we meeting today?
Today and Wednesday.
Today and Wednesday. Okay.
And, and if, uh, if it pleases the board, I think that we could start off today by doing the fire budget.
Okay.
Uh, we got Brett here and so forth and, uh...
Wonderful.
Laura's prepared to do it and that's just...
And everyone that's out there, if you want to, you can sit around and listen to this budget hearing and stuff, that's fine. If you, if you're interested in it for sure, stay around. We will discuss the fire budget. If not, have a great day. No, you're not leaving.
Give you a minute to look over the paperwork that Laura's, uh, put out.
Oh, we definitely will.
Yeah.
Yeah, and put the two fifty on there.
Yeah, if we mark out everything but two fifty on it.
Well, nobody's complaining to me about my age, my length, and everything.
I just wanted to remind everybody that we're still recording, we're still in session, so if you have to go out, please ease out quietly.
Okay. Zipped everybody up right there.
Hot and useless.
Yeah. She's good at it.
This is, yes, this is, yep.
His neighbors just don't want to deal with that.
How many's he got?
One.
So it's not no cockbell, it's a real peewee. Who would do that? Who would do that? Is that on like, water? Or is it a pit?
Okay.
It's Wilbur. Oh, my goodness.
I saw Bill and them here. What are they doing?
Uh, waiting to see what's happening with the...
Uh, we were going to do anything on that?
Yeah.
Having a meeting with the W C C, man.
I, uh, I talked to Bill the other day.
It's a person.
It's a person.
It's a person.
I saw Bill and them here. What are they doing?
Uh, waiting to see what's happening with the...
Uh, we were going to do anything on that?
Yeah.
Having a meeting with the W C C, man.
I, uh, I talked to Bill the other day.
It's a person.
It's a person.
It's a person.
Whatever we do.
It's a person.
It's a person.
Whatever we do.
It's a person.
She said bone.
The core's right here.
We had to shoot it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, yes.
I could hear this, I can't even see it.
I could hear this, I can't even see it.
I could hear this, I can't even see it.
I could hear this, I can't even see it.
I could hear this, I can't even see it.
I could hear this, I can't even see it.
I could hear this, I can't even see it.
I could hear this, I can't even see it.
I could hear this, I can't even see it.
I could hear this, I can't even see it.
I could hear this, I can't even see it.
I could hear this, I can't even see it.
I could hear this, I can't even see it.
I could hear this, I can't even see it.
I could hear this, I can't even see it.
I was supposed to be there tomorrow, so I was going to take the man.
I'm going to order fire there.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think so.
I don't know, maybe one's back there.
In the darkroom, I think they said.
Six.
Some of this?
That's what I thought.
Doesn't he need to be here for her?
Huh?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I think he planned...
Morning.
How are you this morning?
Good.
All right, guys, we're still recording, so hopefully y'all didn't say anything bad about me while I'm at it.
Not too bad.
Did he really?
Yep.
Hmm.
I need to get something else here.
I need to, I just ever get that. What can I do with it?
Mr. President, if I could, I'd like to point out and remind something that Brett has briefed us on before, and that is that this plan is really kind of a mock... It's like, uh, in two thousand and fifteen, we're doing one fire truck for Southwest, uh, three tankers, uh, also. And then in sixteen, we'll do one truck for Lake Harbor. And then in seventeen, we'll do one truck for Monterey. And this gets us pretty well on the, uh, a good schedule of replacements of the truck. The, uh, revenue and expenditure history. Uh, we see that we are drawing down the current beginning balance and we're even using, uh, the, uh, Grand Guff monies. But that's been a, that's been something that we apparently have agreed to and looked at for some time. And a good response, uh, on our emergency systems, both from fire, uh, this gets us in good shape, uh, with the fire. And you also have in here some, uh, uh, some reconstruction, for the lack of a better term, or some work on a couple of the fire stations besides building the one new fire station. Uh, and it, it's all... Which is something that, uh, obviously we at the county, that's the, the part of the, the infrastructure that the county provides. We think of infrastructure many times as buildings and, I mean, as buildings and stuff under the ground. Uh, but this is the, uh, above-the-ground infrastructure. This along with advances in the communication system. Be second to none when it comes to our emergency infrastructure. Uh, and so this was not put together, uh, thinking about what we do this year. It was also put together, looking forward to what we're going to be doing for the next few years. Brett's done a lot of work in this regard. And so I just, uh, I say that, uh, as kind of an introduction. Uh, I think that proposed budget for two thousand and fifteen, and, uh, we're prepared to answer any questions about it.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Stringer, and Brett, looks like you've done a great job putting everything together and scheduling future expenditures to keep our, our pumpers at all our stations within their lifespan, if you will. Um, does all this do anything in it, aside from the new station on Shallow Road? How are we countywide, uh... Go from a ten to an eight in areas that...
Yes, that, where the new station is right now, that area out there is considered a ten. So with the new station, it will drop their insurance rating to an eight.
Is there anywhere else in the county that's a ten?
There's a couple more areas.
Little pockets.
I mean, little pockets here and there, but I mean, it's as far as, um, Jared's got one that we've been looking at a little bit down in his, uh... Building a station to, to get those few couple of houses, I mean, it's, it's not really...
Feasible.
I mean, not, not feasible.
This one's a big broad as far as the, uh...
Yeah, this one's got a lot of rooftops.
Walters, yeah. Is that really the biggest detriment right now?
It shows Walters is getting another station.
That's the one that we've...
I said number two.
Yeah, that's the one we have...
I thought it was Shallow.
It is.
It's Walters Fire Department at Shallow Road.
On Shallow's Road, okay.
But it's in the Walters Fire District. And see, because they're so far away from their home station, that's why the Insurance Rating Bureau...
Yeah.
Put up from a eight to a ten on all those people and their insurance premiums doubled.
Right, quickly.
That are in that, whatever that circumference is.
No man's land. Right. I, I do want to say, yeah. I do... Brett, he and I went down to Puckett last week. Yeah.
Last Monday.
And if anybody's dealt with Puckett, I love Puckett to death, but, uh, they have, uh, they're in a process of wanting to build what we'd call a Taj Mahal of a, uh, fire station, I guess. And... Background checks and, uh, is, by the time they ended up, I think it was going to be the biggest fire station in Rankin County, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. So would have been, would have been the largest one in Rankin County, even in municipalities. Yes.
Hundred by a hundred, twenty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty square feet.
Correct. So, you know, after just about falling out, you know, whenever I was hearing this, uh, of course, he and I went down there, I was under the assumption we were going to be meeting with the mayor and the firemen and stuff like that, but... And he brought out the, how much it was going to cost and everything, their projected cost. And Brett did a really great job of, you know, not, you know, kind of a, I think he was more like an attorney than anything, you know. He didn't really, of course, he's very matter-of-fact, but he didn't really throw them under the bus either, let's put it that way. So, they're really not happy with... Uh, I'm not saying the mayor's not happy with it, but, uh, some of their firemen, I think. But, uh, you know, I'm not, uh, I'm not all about, uh, it's like I told them even on the phone that, you know, if I jump out there and do this, they're going to be standing in line, the rest of them, the rest of all of our fire departments out there are going to be standing in line and say, whoa, 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 what's up for us now? So... The mayor did say he could, uh, he was pretty much guaranteed about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, uh, at no cost to the county. And so we're looking to...
To build a fire station?
To build a fire station.
What does he need us for then?
Because their total ended up...
The grand total is three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars.
Puckett has a fire department? Is it Puckett Volunteer Fire Department?
Yes, yes. They even have a station too, which is not...
Obvious question here.
Not active.
Why, why such a big station, Brett? Is there something?
Because they wanted a station big enough to house all their equipment.
Mm-hmm.
If they don't have enough equipment, they can buy some.
They're looking toward the future.
They are. And I had him do some runs. He, of course, he did some run statistics and all that stuff and just does not justify everything that goes along with it.
I would like to point out that that's not in this budget.
No, sir.
So is there a...
No, sir. No, sir.
I guess Cato's separate from Puckett.
Cato's separate from Puckett.
Cato is, yeah, they're different.
They're close together.
Well, you'd think they're close, but they're really not. Yeah.
Twelve road miles difference.
Yeah.
Fire station.
That's not far.
Not road mile, did it?
Road miles. I mean, you still got to get in that five-mile radius where you're, you know, you keep your ten and eights. So, you know what, and I'm just saying that it is, they've got to have a fire station there.
So you shot down Puckett?
Well, I hadn't shot them down. I'm just saying that, uh, just don't see that the county needs to be involved in a three hundred and seventy thousand dollar, uh, fire station. It's going to be the biggest one in Rankin County because I can see the rest of them coming after us.
There's no way they're building one bigger than Flowood's newest one.
Who?
On the first level, it's even bigger than Pearl Fire Station number one. I've talked to the chief and got the dimensions. It's ground floor, ground floors.
One on eighty?
Mm-hmm.
Why would they build one that big?
When I was at...
Because they wanted to house all their equipment.
Well, they need to put some shit up.
I'm just, I just, the reason why I wanted to say this is because we do have a great fire coordinator that is, you know, I took him down there specifically to, you know, not only did I need some information, but he's one of those forthright, just boom. I mean, we even actually went to some of those buildings to look through the windows and look to see what all they did have. And they do have a bunch of stuff, honestly. So, and the, the sad part about it is the town of Puckett has to, uh, pay their insurance on that equipment, with the exception of the Rankin County trucks and stuff like that. So...
The two fire trucks and, and the tanker.
And here's the mayor saying, uh...
That we pay.
Yeah, those are county-owned trucks.
So the mayor's like, well, do they need that much equipment? And of course, that's kind of putting my man on the spot here and, you know, uh, it's, it's kind of a fine line in between.
Was Marvin there?
But, you know, the mayor called this meeting, so I'm assuming he's got the guys coming You know, the mayor called this meeting, so I'm assuming he's got the guys coming and everything else. Well, they weren't there.
The money man down.
Do I know?
He called the money man down.
Exactly, and, you know, we pretty much told him, I think, you know, they understand that that $150,000, good luck, will. But anyway, that's, that's the reason why it's not in there, but I just wanted to kind of just that, that's what's up.
Because you know that wouldn't nothing but open the floodgate.
I suppose so, I told him. I said, man, that's a floodgate waiting to open.
Hey Brett, you got a bunch of increases on here, man. You want to go over some of them?
You know, one-time purchases that we're looking at for 2015 are Cato Fire Department upgrade for $60,000. One fire truck for Southwest, $320,000.
Now, Cato what?
Cato Fire Department upgrade to the station, $60,000. This, this, there's a packet here.
Which is also a voting precinct, and so that's, they asked for that last year, we didn't have it budgeted, so whenever we went out with a wish list, that was put back in. It does serve as a community center slash voting precinct slash fire department. So it's really all in
Basically, the upgrades to the, to the fire station, the heat and air, septic system.
Right. There was, I mean, it's, if you've ever been out there, it's elaborated.
Exact stuff.
It's a pretty good bid, 60 grand.
Yes, sir. The sewer and air condition.
Sewer, air condition.
Add on.
They're adding a, like a training room or
Right.
I don't have that, that's, I mean, I can get you that, that was, we talked about this last year, so.
I don't even remember it, last year.
Yeah, there was a spot in the station where they were having to build it up because it was flooding from the parking lot. I mean, it's just a bunch of, I mean, nothing really new, just upgrades, you know, to the existing structure.
I want to say that structure is say the least.
It's one of the oldest.
Nothing's really ever been done to the, to the, to the building, so it's really, you know, in all essence, I know it sounds like a huge impact, but at least they did get the request back in, unlike, you know, some, we keep asking over and over, and of course, again, I go to Brett's defense and Bob's, that they did send out to every single to get the rec requests in, you know, and you can't, you can't make them get them in, but if they put them in, at least we can look at them to see if we need to do anything with it.
So where are we at on the budget in terms of last year, how much we spent, how much are we going to increase this year?
Well, in the current year that we're in, 14, of course, we're not finished yet. I do think that everything is pretty where it is today. There is a fire truck that will be paid for before the year ends, and we did not schedule to bring Grand Gulf funds in this year to cover it. We can, if that's the wish of the Lord, but we didn't.
Well, I don't really want to make that a habit, you know.
It's been a practice in the past, but because our cash balance was good, we decided last year not to bring it in. This year, the budget looks like the expenditures are going to be over $2 million. Now, that's up a little bit from what Brett has, because there's been an addition of another request from the reservoir in Castle Woods, and that's about $71,500.
$71,000?
What are we doing to it?
Oh, hey, we just going to go ahead and upgrade all the fire departments.
What are we doing to it?
Brett, you should know about that when that was brought by Mr. Wu into
When'd he bring that in?
It, it's to, as we looked at this, I think it's to improve that area to where it's not, it's a little place right now that's just a building that holds a fire truck. And it is one that is, I believe, is occupied all the time. I think there are firemen there all the time, but that's
Is that the one in Castle Woods?
That's the one in Castle Woods. That's voting, well, no, that's no longer voting.
It used to be
The voting precinct is right next to it. But that's the one in Castle Woods by the tennis court.
Station two.
So what you going to do to it? $71,000 is not a lot.
That's even more than Cato, wasn't it?
It's got some demo, a frame, electrical, plumbing, insulation, cheap rock paint, countertop flooring.
So Laura, you said that our budget's going to go up from last year? How much?
Well, this current year that we're in now, the expenditures will going to be about $1,500,000, and they're going to go up a little over $2 million.
$500,000.
A little, yeah, about 500. And what I did for the next year was, and of course, that's, you know, this is just anticipating things out, like the two tankers that weren't scheduled, and the boat that wasn't scheduled, and those fire departments coming out. I left some of the smaller money in, because I know we'll have other departments coming in with smaller requests, and so looked at, just anticipated what they would be. So if you look over in the ending cash balance, you can see that as we start doing stuff, it's going to bring our cash balance down. Now, I do have
Sorry. She chose our cash balance.
Right here. And what I did for you was on the top
Oh, the very front, okay.
Yes, it was on the front. And of course, up until the end of 13, that's a totally accurate cash balance, because 13's ended, 14 hasn't, so I'm not quite sure what we will end up with by the end of September. So the rest of the four from 14 down in blue are estimates. But that is purchasing the fire trucks this year, next year, and the year after. Now, next year and the year after, we do have scheduled to bring in Grand Gulf money.
For?
The fire trucks. $330,000.
Because we don't have the money.
Just to help keep our, right, to help keep our cash balance from, from getting so low. And typically, that is what we've used Grand Gulf for in the past.
Yeah, but our budget also hasn't been this large in the past.
Well, it's probably because a lot of these stations, expenditures, or whatever, really haven't been
Well, this, no, we haven't had the expenditures for some of the stations, the requests that they have, and the new ones, the Walter ones, we're going to build, but also, this is getting us on that, you know
Track.
Like when we purchased the four truck, fire trucks, and then the one, and then the four, doing it this way, now we're getting into a rotation now.
Instead of buying in a row, I'd rather buy one, 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 instead of buying
Right.
You gave us a printout last year that showed, I guess, all the inventory, and there was a lot more, I guess, vehicles, tankers, I suppose, that needed to be purchased, so if she don't have any in there for next year, are we looking
Well, I think you get
Needing some more
Three tankers in for 15.
Three tankers in for 15. But not, well, I had talked to Brett, and we didn't have any scheduled for 16.
Yeah.
The only reason why List you gave us, they was, we can buy tankers every year.
And you're, and you're right, but the only problem with that is, I didn't want to jump ahead too far ahead on the tankers, because the, the program that we're using is having some problems in the legislature right now, so I didn't want to, you know, that's what I'm saying, I mean, that's two years down the road.
What about the tanker Lake Harbor guy, is it operational?
It's in service.
And have you heard from Robert, they like it, dislike it?
Love it.
And you got
That tanker cost us $67,000, and I mean, if you order a bike brand-new, I mean, a base truck, $212,000, and we bought it for $67,000.
Well, commend you for that, that's a great job.
We've actually got two of those in the, in the county, Puckett's got one, and Lake Harbor's got one. And that's what I want to do this coming up year is to buy three more of those.
Half.
The forestry trucks. They were sitting in the
We don't have a two on here. You said three more.
What, on what?
Tankers.
2015, uh, three tankers.
I guess I'm looking at this front sheet here.
It's back in here.
Well, I only have the schedule, when I talked to Brett, the three tankers in 15.
Right.
I don't, there aren't any
There's not even, there's not even any scheduled for 16 or 17.
Not tankers. Jay, in the very back of the packet that's stapled together, there's a sheet that's
Yeah, I was looking at, I guess, what Hoopy gave us here.
That front sheet?
Second one, yeah.
The only one I had put on top of what he had furnished was this front expenditure history.
How are we doing on our training?
Training's going good.
I know we upped your amount this year. Are we where we need to be on the spending of it, or?
On the training?
Yeah. And I know we offer a lot more to our local fire departments, are they taking advantage of it?
Yes.
That's good.
Even some of the municipal guys are coming to do some training with us.
You've got, what was that that I heard the other day, you had 23 of them from, is it Flowood or somewhere like that?
Yeah, they just came on board on the ERT team.
ERT, yeah.
You said the program at the legislature, is that just to buy the fire truck program? Like, we get every so often, or are you talking about what?
The the tankers that we were buying were military surplus vehicles. And DEQ, when they were military vehicles, they didn't have to meet the emissions acts. Now that they're coming back into general service in the fires, in, or in the fire service, there was some controversy over whether they either had to go back and get those emissions upgrades put on, or whether they were still going to exempt them, so that's still in the legislature, they're still fighting over that. So right now, pretty much, they have, you know, you can still buy the trucks, but they're just kind of putting it on hold.
I guess that'd be DOT then for
Emissions control, what would it cost to upgrade it?
A lot.
I mean, I would imagine it'd be a lot of money.
So that'd kill that deal.
Yeah, that'd, that'd have killed them.
Enjoy that rural fire truck acquisition that we used to get, I forget how many rounds there were, went up to seven or eight, so we haven't been, we don't get that, there hasn't been one in a while, so that $70,000 that we used to get, it's not out there anymore.
On the DOD trucks, that's not really from our legislature, that comes down from the federal mandates. Now, I'll give you an example, when you go to a forest Department of Transportation brings out trailers, and you pull every truck, every fire truck back up, once it comes out of the woods, you pull that fire truck up on the trailer, they jack it up, and if it's leaking, it has to be repaired right there. So it's not so much our guys, it is the federal mandates.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I was wondering who's going to be the one
It's not a fight, it's not a fight with our legislators, it's
Who's going to be the one to come check them, you know? DOT going to pull over the fire truck? What is the thousand?
At least
Fire truck.
Yeah. That was the one we did a few years ago for, was that Monterey?
Monterey's truck.
Mm-hmm, and it was financed through Oshkosh.
Okay. That's our annual payment.
That one has 200 years, I believe after this one, it has 200 years.
There ought to be a really big fire truck graveyard sitting out there somewhere, because they figure every way they can keep you from reusing
Do your old equipment, like
All of it, they send overseas. It's old, I mean, we get it, you know, your collateral surplus, and then we sell it, really Mountain Fire buys a lot of our stuff from us. They take it, strip it down, I mean, part it out, I mean, that's how they make their money.
The new boats y'all getting, are we going to get rid of our old boats, or we just going to add to our collection?
We're going to add those two boats, it's actually a dual-purpose boat, we're going to add to our collection.
Is it just one or two?
It's two boats, it's an inflatable boat up top, and it's a metal connector boat for, for diving on the bottom.
How many do we have currently?
We have a pontoon boat that sits at the office, and we have a G3, which is another liminal boat.
And we're working on planning to get rid of the pontoon boat, because now, there's no need, we, dive rescue is now so you don't, you, we had the, the pontoon boat was basically a dive platform, when you had a known area, you'd just go out there and park it, you could anchor it down, and then you did the search patterns based on, you know, holding a rope where the guys swam back and forth in circles, but with the side scan sonar now, I mean, we can pretty much, you know, if we can locate them, we can find them, and, you know, we can get a quick dive, get our other boat in there and dive pretty fast. But the other boats are, like Brett's talking about, Swiftwater, that's where we're having some issues, and I know we've had a couple of issues over the past year, where we've had to go out and get some people, you know, out of some areas.
I guess that's what the Zodiac's for?
Yes, sir. It's just an inflatable Kevlar boat, you can basically take the floor out of it, package it up.
Just toting that big motor around, huh?
Fold up.
Yeah.
Fold up boat.
Fold up boat.
So how big of a motor goes on that?
Uh, that particular boat, we're putting a 40-horsepower on it.
So it goes heavy?
It's not, really not that bad, I mean
They're not?
I mean, it's really not, two people coming, one pick up the motor, one pick up the foot, I mean, you can put it on, I mean, tow it, it's not that bad.
I guess
I had to leave for just a, for an emergency call, but I think you were touching on it. How close are we overall, county?
There's no way that the county will ever be an eight overall. Just, just like we were talking about, you know, last time we had this conversation, the little pockets that, you know, manpower, I mean, there's, there's no way the county will be a, be a eight overall for, I mean, all of, the whole district.
So there are other fire departments we going to be building?
Uh, we're going to start expanding some district lines. All of our stations are pretty good, except for our district lines. Just what, what they, they already respond to it, it's just they're either their taxing district or their response area.
But that'll, that'll be able to help some of the 10 and 8?
Yes, sir.
That, to me, is such a rural area, because it just, what it does, the insurance
Doubles it.
Doubles it.
Huge. You go from an eight to a 10, and you're, and you're looking at about $1,600 a year on your insurance.
Pretty much double your insurance, that's what we found out, you know, when we first started looking at this. And, and, and that's
And even if, you know, we do expand some districts and stuff like that, if, you know, they are a taxing district, or whatever the case may be, is, yeah, it may cost them a little bit upfront, but, I mean, at the long, you know, at the end of the year, I mean, it's going to be, I mean, that, I mean, a big, big difference.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll talk to you later about it, but I'll just find out kind of where we are on some of the others, we can do that later, some of those areas we were talking about.
But on expanding, are we talking about, when we expand it, we going to do like we did this one, add another station?
No, sir. For easy explaining
We just going to maximize our
If, if, if that's their response area now
Yeah.
That's their whole district. So all we're going to do is, is for they were stopping at, just start extending these district lines out.
And that'll fall within their five mile, basically fall within their five mile.
Brett, do you take into consideration, or, or is it even under, does it come under the heading of fire revenue for any more storm sirens, warning sirens?
That's going to be
So when we find out when this call will work, I guess that's you?
Yeah.
All right. We'll save you.
It seemed like I heard something recently where somebody was standing, and within the ear It seemed like I heard something recently where somebody was standing in, within earshot of one of the storm sirens, and it...
It was.
And it didn't, and it didn't go off on the first at noon, so I would suggest us trying to put together and at least have a volunteer fire department member.
I thought we already had that plan of action.
Somebody to be there at each and every siren.
We have, even went a little bit further than that this past week. The sheriff had a deputy at, at basically each one of them. And I wish I could sit here and say, everything was wonderful. It wasn't, all right?
I can tell you real quick, like I was the other night, it...
Yeah, it wasn't. However, I can also tell... Not just saying, oh my goodness, all weekend, and trying to figure out and make the corrections to get this done. The report I got this morning, Bob can add to it, is that we think we're about ninety percent there. And when we think we're there, we're gonna go out and we're gonna test sirens again before the first of next month. And we may do them three or four at a time, until we make sure that we have all of the sirens working, and...
Let's just do it on a pretty day.
Yeah, well, we, we, we've talked about that. Yeah, we've talked about that, too. And maybe even go to a policy that we test sirens twice a month instead of once a month.
We probably need to put it out.
I agree.
Yeah, Lord knows, it's on the fifteen.
Now, if you want to scratch your head, part of the problems we had Friday, we used both controllers. We literally had some sirens that worked on, meaning the one in the sheriff's office and the one down at the EOC. We literally had some that worked on one and not the other.
Really?
Well, that was a, worked on, did not work when the EOC set it off, but worked when the sheriff's department set it off.
So the backup didn't...
And vice versa. A lot of them worked, the other didn't.
Doesn't matter when you check them, when it's time for them to work.
That makes no sense at all.
Yeah, there's a...
Oh, why does he...
I think there's been an engineer working on that all weekend.
Yeah, there's been an engineer working on it all weekend.
So do they have a logical excuse?
Yeah.
What was it?
Uh, well, we got the lighting's fine. We think, think that some of the computer infrastructure over here at the sheriff's office.
I thought they had that fixed, though.
Well, we had a small thing, but they said they still could be a glitch in it, so they're, we're changing out that computer.
Weather siren.
And the communications, they found out that the timing was off between a computer talking to computer and a computer talking to siren. And if the si, if the time and date was not synchronized in with both the controllers, then it didn't recognize it and it wouldn't set it off. So it's not... Is that the siren would not recognize it, or would feel that there was an intruder trying to set the siren off, and it blocked it out and would not set it off.
How many sirens have we got?
Thirty-nine.
So really, all it takes is thirty-nine people to be at each station, I mean.
Only. Only.
Well, I mean, that doesn't have to be all paid people. Where there was a group that manned...
Yeah, we've always had, or I, I mean, a few years ago, we talked about it, and I've had a volunteer go out, or we've had volunteers, or some of our employees to go out and watch every siren.
Right.
Well, and that's great, but, you know, when the guy, and let's say, in southwest Rankin County tells me that the siren's working, and then I get a... Not working.
Who do you believe?
I would still, I'm still sending the guy out to check it, because, I, I mean, I don't want to call the guy a liar, I don't, I don't want to get into that. I, I'm on error on the side of it's not working.
Yeah.
Because, and, and we've all been out there, you know, and I know some of those guys have had to leave before and call and tell me, you know, that they were going to, you know, the three-pronged road siren. Well, they caught a call, and they couldn't be out there. And I didn't get a call saying it wouldn't work, and so I'm assuming that it did, so...
So going to our new digital system, what impact is that gonna have on our ra, on our rate sirens? Because that's something supposed to be involved with it.
Yeah, it should be, it'll upgrade all the antenna, or all the radio systems, so it should activate and, once again, increase... Into the radios speaking to the siren to activate it. So it'll, should eliminate some of those problems.
See, like, the other evening, I was out at Greenfield Community Center with the sheriff and about a hundred and twenty-five people.
I heard about it.
Yeah. So all of a sudden, we get this, and of course Craig's lay, Craig's shaking his head whenever we looked over there and see all these people lined up out there. We're like, they're in Monterey again, here we come, so.
You know, he's got hands.
Anyway, so...
It was all good.
And that one didn't work with the sheriff's department controller, but it did work with our controller.
Really? Because the sheriff got on there, because they had several say, hey, our thing, our sirens not working, so the sheriff gets on the phone, calls them up, tell them, beep, hit a bleep, we want to hear it. Working, but we didn't hear it.
One of the interesting things is, is a comment that one of, somebody made, talking about trying to get the timing synchronized so that someone could not just walk in and figure out how to set off the siren at some indiscriminate time. So the engineer, or one of the guys from Jackson Communications, made the comment, said he could take his cell phone and set the sirens off in most of the municipalities here.
Really?
Oh, great.
He could just start a catastrophe base. That's what this is all about.
Throughout the state, he could do that.
Ours just aren't working.
Yeah, we got it protected so good, we can't set them off. Yeah, we got them so firewalled that, uh, we can't make them go on.
It's pretty bad that a weather siren is knocked out by the weather.
Maybe I ought to back off on some of that security stuff, Hunter.
Sounds like it, man.
I'll give a rust.
Make it real easy, where like, push the button, then it goes off.
But I think that the basic question, the question that started all of this was, we have thirty-nine sirens now, how many more do we need?
No, nobody asked that.
Yeah, he did.
No, I can tell you, I know, I know two.
No. If that's, if that's the question.
Sounds to me like, I don't know if we need any more, if we have more, the more we got, the more problems we have, too.
We do have more than we...
Yeah, I mean, if they ain't gonna work, ain't no sense in putting them up.
Right. There's been some other volunteer fire departments writing grants. Why are we not doing that? I mean, they're getting some real money out of this.
We are writing grants. We don't qua, a lot of grants that they are specifically qualified for that we helped them write, that we're not eligible for because we don't...
There's a guy down in Jerry's area that does them a lot. Is there a way that you could...
Boy, they tie them up, that clearly.
Yeah.
Kind of spread that over to some of these other departments?
All we can do is offer to help.
Yeah, know how to write them, boy, he knows, he's got them.
How about Rodney?
Down path, he's...
Bill Warren does it real well.
Yep, bills really well.
We get those guys together, and, you know, it's one of those things, you know, we can show them how to do it, we'll help them do it. But, you know, and some of them have gotten them before, and that pretty much, once you get one, you pretty much, for, depending on what you're putting in for. I mean, you put in for a fire truck this year, if you get it, well, you can, you can wait five, six years before you ever need to fill one out on a fire truck. But you can put one in for a fire truck this year, and then you can put one in for breathing apparatus next year, get that. When you put in for turnout gear the next, you can get that. You can put in for, you know, a, a breathing air system the next, get that.
Yeah, as long as you're not duplicating type stuff on it.
When you start duplicating it, you can, you're not gonna...
And we actually got a lot of grants this year in the county. Lake Harbor got some air packs and a brand-new cascade system.
They got a tanker.
That was last year. Years ago.
Cascade system.
Some cascade system, I mean, there's a bunch of folks out there writing grants, and, I mean, they're getting grants.
I just would like to, you know, do what you can to get the other folks to...
Well, and, and I'm not trying to be ugly, but, you know, it's like Greg was talking about a while ago. I mean, we invite them, we ask them to come, we ask, tell us what you're lacking in, you know, we could, we'll be more willing to help you. But I can't fix a problem if you don't tell me what's wrong.
I think sometimes, like you said, it's just because it's easy to come here.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we catch that, I mean, we're...
And then when it comes...
You know, we, we go out and tell them, you know, hey, we need to do this, and y'all come up and tell us that. And, you know, I'm not trying to be ugly with y'all, but next thing I know, you know, one of the supervisors called, well, why ain't we helping them with this? They never said anything to us back.
Well, we, uh...
It's easier to, to try to help them when you know they've done all this other stuff.
You know, we might, uh, come out better by maybe letting this guy do some grant, right, for the other departments, and give him a percentage of the grant.
I'm not opposed to that.
An enticement, you know, to, to maybe help these other departments that are not, don't have, you know, capability of doing it.
I don't know if he'd want to do that.
I wouldn't.
Well, I mean, if he can't get another, if he can't get the same grant twice, then, you know, it's not really taking away from his department.
Only problem with all the grants are all come do about the same exact time, so when he's working on one for, I'll say it, it's for Cleary Fire Department, when he's working on that, during that grant period, these other grants are out there that's open at the same time, so he's not gonna have time to ride his and get his done, and turn around and do somebody else's.
Right.
And sometimes they're fighting for the same...
Florence has a bunch of grants.
Bunch of them.
There's a bunch of departments that they, they get grants yearly, and there's companies out there that will come in and basically, I mean, it don't cost you out of, out, any out-of-pocket money.
Right.
You just add that grant assisted or grant, however you want to word it, to the grant. I mean, they'll pay for it. If you get it, if you get the grant, then they get their two, three...
Proceed from it.
You know, whatever it is.
Well, Firehouse Up did that about, what, three years ago?
Firehouse Up does it every year, and I email that out.
Southwest Rankin, was it?
Every year.
Oh, that's kind of what I'm talking about, you know, stuff that...
There's different companies that do different things, and when we find out about it, we shoot an email out, well, and this, and I'm gonna give you an infrared camera, for example. You know, we shoot out, hey, there's a grant out there for this. Well, if they already have them, or think they have another, they're not, they're not gonna put in for.
Right.
You know, some of them are specific, and, and, you know, they're just not interested in it.
Right.
You know, there's a lot of different ones that rotate at a different time.
Well, that makes sense.
Any more questions for Brett?
You ain't got no chickens, do you?
No, we got horses.
Oh. But you're not in that sub, is you?
Do what?
Where the horses are.
All right.
Thank you, Brett, but you know who I was talking about.
Well, I know exactly who you're talking about.
All right, who we got next? So, I, I don't know. Do we get approval for 2015 fire budget?
We ain't voting on it, we didn't have time for that yet.
All right, yes, all right, I won't know.
We just wanted to let y'all know what was in it and it's going to sustain.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
One at a time.
Y'all need to explain, I mean, I don't think you talked about any... Do you want to add the reservoir stuff, too?
Yeah, the reservoir stuff is in here, and I think that we... And I think we also will do a little, we'll, we've got some stuff on the, on the list that some of it's included in one year and some of it's included in another year, to break it out better by a year.
I think on any of these improvements, we need to know a little more about them.
Well, the, uh...
I'm talking improvements as far as fire stations.
Yeah, well, of course, we, you talked about Cato.
Right.
A little while ago.
Yeah.
And we can, the reservoir fire station in Castlewood just came in a few days ago. And the, uh...
Must've seen Cato getting something.
And so we get, you get that, and we've had the discussion further down the line for Puckett.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's...
But I think that we will, overall, this sheet is probably, you know, pretty good. But being able to get the stuff in what particular year is gonna fall in. For example, still see the fire station in Walters is on this list for a hundred and thirty-three. Well, y'all have already approved that. Now then, we have to take a look at where the spending is gonna come out of, what year. This first one of the funds will come out.
We've included that amount of money in that budget.
Yeah, so I want to make sure we haven't also included in fourteen, that type of stuff.
So we do have a need for the pumpers, I mean, the tankers, so maybe 2016, we shouldn't just assume we're not buying any?
Well, I think...
I mean, yes, the, the need is still there, yes.
It's just we may have to do something different, right?
And that's just, when I did that one sheet, that's an estimate based on the fact that I talked to Brett, and he wasn't scheduling any at this time, out of the sixteenth budget.
Brett?
Because that's just an estimate anyway.
Is there, I know you don't have a crystal ball to look in, but is, you know, the, right now, the rating bureau doesn't recognize the foam. And there's some other things in terms of the rating bureau. Do you see the commissioner of insurance? Questions asked to Larry Barr at one of his breakout sessions on the coast. And he seemed to think that that, that might be going to change, and that some things in the, in the rating process might...
The, the rating bureau is looking at adopting a new ISO schedule. You will get some credit for some things, some things you won't get credit for. Something else that is, is helping the, the fire departments out there this year, you know, the, the Neffers reporting system, where they go in and put in all their run reports, their EMS calls, their fire calls, wrecks, hazmat, anything, any call they run. The state bought a system, and it's called the Mississippi Fire Bridge. And that is another way that they can get positive points to help their rating, is that they get in there and fully utilize that system. We had a training on it about a month ago, and August the fifteenth, we're gonna put our, put Rankin Counties in place, ready to go. But as far as the foam system and that stuff, yes, they're looking at that.
Now, would that be something that they would be, that, let's say, for instance, the chief from one of the departments dot org, click a button to go to the fire coordinator, and then there'd be a, a link there that he could access that information? Or will he go directly to the state to do that?
Go directly to the state.
And I guess they send you a copy of it? They just CC you, or?
Isn't there a cost issue with the foam also?
Uh, as far as what now?
I, I, I don't know. Something seems like I've had, I think we need to take a look before we tout the foam. And I, you know, it seems like a good, a good idea. But the, but the cost of the foam, the life cycle of the foam, that type of stuff, we need to make sure we understand before we hang our hat on it. Okay, that's all I say.
I can't, how quick can you recharge foam, too?
Simply just open a thirty-gallon hopper and pour in the five-gallon bucket foam in there, fast as you can pour, I mean, I can flow it.
Yeah, the foam right now is, as y'all, I think y'all may remember, if you don't, we buy the foam by the, by the tote, by the, was it...
Two-hundred-and-sixty-gallon tote.
By the tote, and each department comes and, and repurchases it from us, and no, you know, it's at cost to them, because we can get a better price on a large amount. And then they come and get the five-gallon buckets from us, because typically they don't need much on stores, so we rotate it back out with them. That's how the, the foam purchasing is done at this time. And that also ensures that that foam meets the standards that are set by the manufacturer.
Of the truck itself?
Of the apparatus, because there's, there's some... You get that are not as good, but, you know, it, it really starts getting expensive to...
Is there a shelf life in it? On it?
They recommend a one-year shelf life on it. We don't have that problem. City of Pearl buys from us, Brandon, Flowood, all the volunteers.
So you'll go through that two-hundred-and-sixty-gallon?
About every three months.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Appreciate you.
Oh, okay, let's, uh.
Y'all take care.
Since Renee is here, uh, I would, uh, propose that we, uh, take up her issue.
She got an issue?
And if you remember, I mentioned this earlier last week, uh, that is. Mariah's Renee, the, uh, the one inspector and the two part-time admin. We've got the one inspector on board, we've got one of the part-time admin on board. The revenues, which I think she's been passed out to you, supports what she wants to do, and that is, rather than having two part-time, convert that to one full-time administrative, uh, understanding, and also understanding upfront. That, that does not include a new full-time, and keep the part-time, because the part-time worker is retiree and cannot take the full-time position. And the part-time understands and says that she understands that what's really needed is the full-time, and she's not gonna make any issue out of stepping aside and letting a full-time person come in. Did I state that right, Renee? Yeah, okay.
What is the?
You've been briefed well, one new employee.
To office manager, um, she's been doing that work, she's doing it now. I just asked for her to get like a $3,000 increase a year in pay.
What line item are you?
156.
Oh, I was looking for the Office of Community Development.
I think Renee can tell you, and it's my observation too, the, uh, the activity in that office has, uh, increased significantly in the last few months. And I mean, people, just people walking in and doing things.
Increase in call volume, um, trying to find out the process, what's required.
And it's not all, it's not all PRV nuisance property related either, that there's an increase in building permits too, isn't it, Renee?
There's an increase in the. Utility permits, uh, and that's just on a 10-month, um, I figured from October 1st of 13, um, through July 28th. And, um, the utility permits, we had done 950, and we had collected $71,000 on those 950 permits. Some are done at no charge if they have the home inspection report. Just, uh, the regular permits are actually down just a little bit. So we've seen an increase in our permits of 824 during that same time period.
Hey, speaking of that, you're talking about, uh, inspections. You remember, we had a meeting in here one time with some of them, uh, with the Home Build Association? You know, some of them wanted to be taken off of something, and did we ever do that, do we ever notify?
Craig had suggested that they put something in writing asking to be, uh, you know. Never submitted anything.
Okay, I think, okay.
We met with, how many representatives, must've been a half of us or a whole that were in here.
Yeah, right.
We gave them an opportunity to voice all of their concern.
Well, I think a couple of them will, I think they failed to do it, because I got asked the other day if we had that, we had done that, and I thought, you know, I'm not sure.
What, an inspector wants to be taken off the list?
Uh, no, no.
What they're concerned about is that, is that somehow the county, uh, could be deemed as relying on the information contained in their report through our process, which we do, by the way, as a courtesy to the homeowner.
Yeah.
We say, oh, if you've already spent money on a home inspection, then we will accept that home inspection and review the home inspection itself, the report itself, for the purpose of addressing the county's issue with respect to the condition of property. The, the inspectors, some of them, not all of them, have raised the issue. We don't, we don't allow any third party, other than the one who's paid for the report, to rely on. County accepting our report in lieu of the county's permit process. So I said, put that in writing, tell us that we're not allowed to use your report, and that what we can do is tell these people that use you.
Well, publish it.
We're gonna have to go out and actually perform an inspection, because you just so happen to choose one of the home inspectors that doesn't allow us to rely on that report.
So you'll have to pay more money.
Bad for them, but.
Right. Yeah, they'll eventually withdraw their letter request.
Yeah.
When they can't figure out why nobody's calling them.
Yeah.
And be a double.
Renee, how many people were in the office when Roy was here?
I may have referred you as a phone caller to explain that, because I can't see why they'd want to.
I think we had seven.
How many of those were inspectors?
Yes, aren't they?
Uh, they are, uh, probably, let me see, let me just make a list real quick and make sure I'm getting everybody. All right, so, um. Looks like probably four, Tab, um, Joel, John, and Dwayne. Also Tommy was here when Roy was here, um, and he's no longer. But we've picked up John Gaskins as part of that reservoir utility district.
So, the three then that were not, Roy's one of those three?
Mm-hmm, Roy, Tommy, and Barbara are no longer here, and Barbara has gone out of the office as well.
But I mean, when he was here though, you said there were four inspectors and there were seven in the office, so that would leave three. You and Judy. And John.
That's right.
And Roy, does that make the seven?
Roy, uh, Renee, and Judy would be three in the office, and then Tab, John, Joel, and Dwayne were inspectors, that would be four. So.
How many do we have now?
Nine in a part-time.
How many?
Nine in a part-time, ten, but one of them's part-time.
Okay.
Well, we're fixing to move somebody full-time in that place, right?
Right.
But the part-time will stay anyway. Part-time will stay too.
Oh.
Oh, the part-time.
Let's not say, well.
The part-time will become a full-time.
So the nine that we have now, how many are inspectors?
Five.
Sure, Roy did some inspecting when he was here. Is that correct?
He did, when needed.
Is John working out okay? Gotcha.
He is, he's doing a good job.
But he's dying over here. The four that we have that are non-inspectors, what are their duties? I know it's you and Judy, who's the other two?
Uh, we hired a new person, Michelle Alfonso, and she works up front with Judy in the office. You know, she works the counter, answers the phone. I also have Michelle, uh, doing as much correspondence, that type thing, helping with nuisance properties. She tracks and logs all the nuisance properties, she prepares affidavits for justice court. And then also, we have to keep a log on those reservoir community district, like violations to the zoning ordinance with your parking, uh, things like that. And then she also prepares those affidavits. Uh, she maintains the files and all that stuff, um, and I guess basically that's pretty much.
Who's the fourth though?
Part-time.
Michelle, Judy, Renee.
And Kathy goes.
You said it was ten part-time, is it nine with the part-time?
No, it's ten with part-time.
So then.
I'm sorry, that includes the request.
Okay.
Then, then new in there this year.
So it's really eight, and then we get a.
And then write the part-time.
A part-time, okay.
Because I've already put in the request.
I will say that working the counter keeps them extremely busy, there is a lot of people coming in and out, and, uh, you know, the volume is picking up. Southern Penn's getting on board now, so we should see even more of that.
Well, we added a person, an inspector, when we did the, I, I'm just trying to get it straight in my head. If we, if our numbers are down on our inspections, aside from doing these, you know, utilities, and we added a person to take up that load for an inspection, and we added a person to do the office work, you know, I don't know why we need to put another person on.
Even the inspections picked up on the other end though? No, I don't, I mean, I don't.
I thought you said they went down.
The, the regular building permits have gone down slightly, but we're doing those utility inspections now, and those permits are, we've done 950 of those.
That we didn't, we didn't have that many of them before.
We didn't have any before, this is.
See, right there, Jay.
And those, and those are pretty much.
We've seen an increase in permits overall by 824 during the 10-month time period.
Most of those are paying for themselves, is that correct?
Those utility permits?
Right.
Most of them are.
Seventy-five, did you say about seventy-five?
Seventy-one thousand.
We've already added two people and, and a vehicle, that's more than.
Two additional people?
You, we added an inspector. You know, when Roy was here, Judy, Renee, and Barbara worked the office up front. And now, with Roy gone, and me moving out from helping with that type thing up there, you have Michelle and Judy working full-time. Kathy just works part-time four days, I mean, four hours a day, uh, it, you know.
Which they have to go, uh, go to lunch and stuff like that.
That's right, when somebody's out, um, vacation, et cetera.
Vacation, sick, whatever. I mean, I, I've always kind of thought, how in the world, uh, uh, because I work in an environment like that. So you've almost, you have to have someone there at all times. When you open that door till you finish, that day, you've got to have someone working.
Even Kathy came to me and she said, Renee, you need a full-time person, you know, I, I see that you need a full-time person. And she said, if, if you can get a full-time person, you know, I will relinquish my job and, you know, because I see the need for it.
Right.
So she understands.
Well, she came, and she came from that type of environment too, where she knows that, you know, we're public service oriented, where we've got to have some, you can't just shut down an office, governmental office and say, we'll be back from here to here. I just.
Sure you can, they do it all the time.
Sure you can, but I'm sure if, uh, you get enough complaints where people are saying, okay, well, I'm going up there on my lunch hour to do both, and that's where most of your business is done, you know, most people take off their lunch to run over there and try to do their business, and here, your people are going to lunch, and all of a sudden, the first thing, no, it's closed.
We don't eat at my shop.
Yeah. They think we're, I mean, they'll call me on Saturdays and Sundays.
Crazy.
And we're not there. So you're looking at a total increase of, uh, 32,000, looks like, over what, last year's?
Because she had some decreases too.
Right.
Other line items.
Right. And all that, that's with the full-time, or it raises and everything in, right? Got you, okay.
Okay, all right.
I do, I need four new computers, um, Rusty said put about a thousand dollars, they just won't stock computers, they probably won't be that much, but.
Right.
They pretty much let us know that those are on, you know, the last leg there.
Okay.
Imagine that.
She's gonna need a couple of beef soups and chicken, chicken ketchup.
Let me just tell you, go at night and get the chickens. Catch a buttered night.
What do you do, catch a hog?
Sweet.
Turn that over to John.
Yeah.
Now, he probably want to raise to do that now.
I think that'd be right up his alley.
Any more questions?
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, you, you definitely, uh.
You about ever ask what John does?
No, but now since you're asking that, would you ask what you're?
Does he do inspections also?
He doesn't on a regular basis, now John works stormwater, and if we have complaints with drainage issues, things like that, he does still go into subdivisions and take a look at stormwater issues, things like that. Um, he helps with the zoning, uh, in the office, that kind of thing, and, you know, we have to look at the home inspection reports to make sure that there are no health and safety issues, so if he's in the office, then he gets to do a lot of that, you know, look at, review those home inspection reports, which is helpful.
Good.
And. He does.
I called their office, uh, last week, Judy brought me, they called me about a problem out in Hills. And this was another place, the, the contractors and subcontractors, and they're working on houses and so forth, were blocking the street so that the garbage truck could not go down in there, and people were complaining their garbage wasn't being picked up, didn't want to pay for their garbage to be picked up. So, uh, I called with the government and I also talked to Renee's office and told John about it. He does a lot.
Yeah.
He does. Does he do a lot of DEQ type stuff, no rise certificates and other things?
That's Dwayne, Dwayne Jones does the flood, he's our flood manager, and, uh, he works with MDQ a lot on that. And, uh, John does do some stuff with MDQ, but it's mainly more like, um, erosion control type stuff and stormwater issues.
I know he's helped me on several things, kind of ordinary, and speaking of Dwayne, Dwayne is, speak highly of him, he's, uh, he fills in so many spots. I see that, yeah.
They both do, they're both good to help out with, you know, whatever needs to be done.
Right, some of the same things that.
We need to try and improve our presentation on nuisance property. Whenever we get the pictures, it just doesn't tell the whole story, I guess. It'd be nice if we, I don't know, maybe do a, a video of it, possibly, uh, like start from one end, go to the other. Personally, I, I, sometimes I, you know, it makes it difficult to, you know, really identify what the issue is.
I don't know how, because the video's still gonna be pictures too, I agree with what you're saying, sometimes a picture doesn't really do.
But if you start, you know, from one side and pan all the way over to the other, uh, we could at least stop it, you know, and point out.
Yeah, that's true.
Where the issues are.
We can work on that, see what we can do.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Renee.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate you.
Remember, he's on his way back down, he had to go up to Chancery Meet the Security, um, man that was coming up there, but he's on his way back down.
Larry Swells.
Larry Swells, to talk about his.
Yeah, well, on that subject.
I'm glad to hear him say he, uh, and, and talk about how they were, um. I'm glad to hear him say he, uh, and, and talk about how they were, um, fee-based, have to pay for everything.
Oh, I thought she was gonna talk about how the judge made sure to let everybody know he was not being negative toward anybody but us.
All right, got it.
But.
And by the way, I do have a whole list of security things I could talk about, but not, you know.
Well, it was my understanding what happened last week was.
We all recorded.
Hey.
Yeah.
I understand. I mean.
Still recording.
Uh, I, uh, I, I thought the situation was, you know, at Chancery was because of what had occurred from some individuals. Not necessarily the security issue was the same in both places. I don't know what the security problems are at Justice Court or what they're asking for, I guess.
I, I think that what we will find is that the, and there is a consultant looking at, uh, Chancery Court now. I think we'll find, I think we will learn that a lot of the findings out of that report could be equally applied to Justice Court.
I would think so. Assume that it would, if they're in the same type of situation as far as their openness and availability and accessibility.
And I think you would find that in Justice Court, there may be, uh, might even have one or two issues that Chancery Court doesn't.
As the newly enacted gun laws, how, how do they pertain to a, to a court setting? If somebody has a enhanced concealed carry permit.
I wouldn't let the lawyer talk that more than I, but they, you know, uh, I don't think guns are allowed in courts, period.
Court has entered an order. If, if the judge has complete autonomy controlled by state law on this courtroom, if he enters a standing order that addresses no weapons within his courtroom, you can get him there.
Really?
Yes. But it is subject to interpretation whether a judge can enter an order that prohibits weapons from the entirety of the courthouse. That's not been answered. What has been answered is the courtroom. If you talk to these enhanced concealed carry guys, they'll tell you straight away, you can only prohibit me in the courtroom if the court is in session.
I think that, I think that's the way I understood it too.
And I've just jumped into that. I think that was what y'all were asking.
Most of your problems happen outside.
God, uh, he said that, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna make sure you guys understand, when it comes to the courthouse, we may have responsibility for the facility, but if a judge or a, a group of the judges, uh, in that courthouse enters an order prohibiting the carrying of weapons in that structure, that is not on us. That's on them. All right? Cause we got even our original ordinance addressed.
Cause then already.
Cause it's the judges.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Can the judges order, do an order for us to build a new courthouse?
Uh, probably not. Um.
But I think you did, you came pretty close Friday.
Jay, there's a separation powers issue and, and, and what the order that we got from Chancery Court is, has to do with security issues and not, which are primarily service-related. The security plan itself, the, and, you know, the equipment obviously is a different deal, but, you guys still have the discretion, even with an order confronting you, you still have the discretion. When to spend, what to spend, how.
But we also have a discretion if we don't do it to go to jail.
Uh, you, you have, you have the discretion to, to be held in contempt of an order of the court and then, then we have a constitutional crisis.
Yeah. Yeah, then, then we go to jail. Well, uh, he would let us sit there and brew on it a little while. Honestly, I was kind of getting the feeling that that's where he was leaning at today.
When you say he, we're talking about Judge Shirley.
Judge Shirley, yeah. Like, he was like, I thought that's what he was talking about.
Let me, let me be really clear about this. A, a chancellor, a chancellor has significant authority under state law. A justice court judge is an inferior court with very limited authority under Mississippi law.
Oh, yeah?
We, you, you got challenged last Friday with somebody carrying a forty caliber Glock.
Yeah.
And you got challenged this morning with somebody carrying a straw and a spitball.
Oh, so they basically couldn't write an order telling us to do anything?
Wait, Dan?
But.
Are we recording?
NBC has C R E.
That was a straw and a spitball.
Yep.
Okay, and compared to the Chancery Court.
By comparison.
How far is the level of authority?
So.
Correct.
Now. Let's be big.
Here's another point about what you heard. Everything you heard is a legitimate issue. I didn't hear anything that was not legitimate.
Right.
It's a legitimate issue.
Yeah.
Yes, particularly the ADA portion, uh, he may not have the authority himself, but if they get the feds in on the ADA issue, it's even above and beyond the Chancery Court.
I can assure you, it takes a long time to fulfill that ADA requirement. Took me about seven months just with, uh, two parking spaces.
We have. Yeah. We have a actual. Uh, I thought this, this gentleman was particularly large and our, our handicapped accessible restroom downstairs was not large enough to.
I think his motorized, uh, wheelchair was too long.
Yeah, that's why I saw my.
Yes. Jay, we don't, they're, they're actually, I'm always.
But that's, that's, that's how you're saying, so I, a lot of them.
But there may be an ADA compliant restroom in the facility, but getting to it.
Yeah.
Is the issue. And so that was a motorized wheelchair, from what I recall.
Yeah.
About that particular.
Yeah.
But there was no way for that individual to access it, not because he couldn't get into the restroom, because he couldn't get to it.
Well, the elevator won't carry you down there too?
There was still a step involved.
Oh, okay.
When they went down. She said she could have shown him into the ladies restroom, but to get to the man, there was still a step involved.
Okay.
Well, he could have come out of that door and gone across by.
Well, that's what he did.
Handicapped, uh, was it?
Yeah. Yeah, I always thought he went next door to the circuit building.
I think they took him to the circuit court building. Jay, one, one other point about that too. A suit of that type ADA, whatnot, that, I mean, it's gonna, number one, it's a federal court case. It can be filed by the state court, but it's a federal court case. It would not be filed in Justice Court. I think that's an important point to consider.
Yeah.
No justice court judge would hear that matter. Uh, and so I want to stress again, what you heard is legitimate. Those are legitimate commitments that.
And we're getting on that, right, to.
Yeah.
Get the bathrooms taken care of.
All right, moving on.
Okay, moving on. All righty.
I think that what we have now, Mr. President, is, uh, Chancery Clerk is here to talk about the Chancery Clerk's budget. Got the issue that we talked about earlier. And I, uh, I know that you have, y'all have expressed some interest in that how the Chancery Clerk goes about collecting his money and spending his money. So with that, I'll.
Again, uh, this morning's, uh, actions about Mr. Shirley were definitely warranted, uh, probably, timing was, uh, probably not, and I think Craig would agree with me, probably not, whatever, but we do appreciate, um, Judge Fairley and Grant and myself as a, uh, overseer of those, uh, employees in the, in that building, uh, we do take those threats seriously. And, you know, I, when I first came on board as Chanc-, uh, as Chancery Clerk, I'll never forget, I was meeting with all the judges. I'm talking about Circuit and County and all of them. And, and Craig can appreciate this and he knows. They said, if anything happens in any court, it's gonna happen in our court because we're actually dealing with all their assets, their children and everything they own. I mean, it's every, this, it's their life and all. So we deal with a lot of, uh, uh, real tedious issues and all that kind of stuff. Of course, we deal with mental and drug and alcohol commitments as well. And, uh, I don't know how y'all handle it, what y'all keep up with, but I know. Amount of attempted suicides and suicides, uh, I'm talking about per week. Uh, and so as you can tell, we have a lot of, uh, issues out there that, uh, that are troubling to a lot of people and a lot of families need a lot of help. Uh, I've, I've obviously helped a lot of people in each one of your areas and your, in, in all of your areas uh, because there is a, uh, a real crisis out there that we have to address. Let me tell you, I thank you for, uh, always helping me address, uh, my issues in Chancery and, and always Craig, uh, being, uh, having the experience of working in my courts and also dealing in my land areas, uh, as, uh, I do appreciate their, uh, input and any, uh, anything that they can add to this. But I do, I do thank y'all, each of you for, um, um, working with us and helping us provide the, uh, what we do for all of our constituency of the county. Uh, I will tell you, we've had tremendous increases in, uh, all of our categories, uh, especially in court. We have had, uh, we have actually almost doubled and, and I'm gonna let her address that in, in mental, mental and drug. Tremendous and serious, uh, issues about, uh, security and safety, especially for her and, and the things that we deal with and what we do there as well. And again, thank you for, you, for these, uh, representing y'all coming up and helping us address those issues as well. Uh, the fee system, uh, of course, is a long, 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 uh, stat, set up by statute many, many, many years ago. Uh, Craig, I don't know how far back that goes and when it was set up. Laura may know. We've been around here a long, long time. Laura and I have, especially not by age, but just simply by serving the public. And all, and, uh, but anyway, it's a system that's set up in Circuit and Chancery, uh, that if you need us, you come see us. Other than, other than that, you don't come to see us at all. I think, uh, David Moore expressed that this morning. And that's how we operate. That's what we do. We operate off, uh, copy fees. We operate off filings and these, these, uh, these great staff, they share with you that in just a moment of, of maybe a procedure of how that works and all that. And then we have. With Brown calling, imagine that. Only four or five calls a day. Anyway, and then I, I will break down of where our money goes.
Is he really calling you?
Where's he at?
That's okay. He just got off phone with me, so.
But I mean, that's nothing unusual. I'm glad, I'm glad to talk to my supervisor many times.
I get ten or twelve, I get ten or twelve a day, so. If you only get five, you're lucky.
He's not mine. I talk to him too.
Yeah, I mean, maybe four or five is, is cut, maybe that's being conservative, you know, whatever we're talking about, but I love my supervisor. But, uh, I'll let each one of them just kind of share with you, uh, their office responsibilities and basically what we're doing, where we are. Uh, and then maybe I can do a summarization of that, uh, when we get through. So I'll let, uh, who wants to go first here? Anybody volunteer? Hey, I'm gonna let Shannon McLaurin. Shannon, I, I actually does my, uh, uh, commitments and, uh, she'll tell you that that is a, a really tough job. Uh, I don't, we don't take it lightly because we're dealing with people's emotions and their lives. So, uh, she's very, very good at what she does. She's very, very talented at what she does and, and I can say that my judges love her. And when the people leave there, they feel a little bit. Ortiz and, and have gained that daily on how to handle the situation and all that. But, uh, uh, we have to, we all watch after for Shannon. When she has a commitment in there, that the, uh, benefit is watching, I'm watching, everybody's watching because, we have to be, might be on our toes, but, uh, because sometimes these can be really, really dangerous, uh, situations and all that. So this is Shannon McLaurin. Shannon?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I am, of course, the person that does the commitments. We average between, for mental and alcohol and drug, we average about thirty-four, thirty-five commitments per month, which is a very big increase from when I first started just in two thousand and twelve. Um, mental commitments have just increased a lot of young people that, that were, were actually seeing a lot of young, young adults and even children because they're six years old. And these are the people that I'm having to deal with. A lot of people that I get, they come from Brentwood. Some of them are just directly off the streets. Some of them are repeats that I've done over and over again. Um, so that has definitely doubled. Also, my alcohol and drug commitments have doubled, um, or maybe even tripled because. Come off, off the streets. Now, we do voluntary and involuntary commitments. A lot of counties don't do involuntary commitments. They'll just have a person that come in and they say they need to commit a family member and they say, you have to get an attorney and they just won't help them. That's the good thing, I think, about Rankin County, that we are public servants and we do whatever we can to help anyone that comes into my office. Um, we definitely go above and beyond. A lot of circumstances where we have people that don't have the money, um, just all kinds of things. We have all kinds of different scenarios that come through my office and, and, and I do believe that it is my duty to do whatever I can to help them and to accommodate them. Um, I don't know anything else I need to address. Yes, yes, definitely. A lot of times when I get stuck in a predicament and, and the way we do the paupers oath, we don't just let anybody just sign because we do have some people that take advantage of that. So a lot of times I have to go get my judges and get them to come in and, um, they kind of go through the people and, and question them about their finances and things like that. And they have to get very detailed because we don't just do this just, you know, for everybody because a lot of people will take advantage. I've had Ms. Larry to write personal checks for some people, um, because. Somebody that we need to try to help and, and we do. We go above and beyond to do everything we can to try to help these individuals cause that, that's what we're here for.
And the, and the judges, I mean, a good thing about our judges, I, we really, we kind of had a problem. We all dealt with, uh, paupers us and we dealt with them for many, many years, Walter, and you know, as well as I do. Um, but we went to our judges and our judges allow us to, if someone walks in there and we may know that they do have money or whatever, um, they, they allow us to interrupt them in court and bring them before, which is a good thing. So we, and usually when we say we're gonna go interrupt the judge bringing before the court and they say, yeah, I got the money, they can pay that. Now, that's a big savings for us. I mean, that, that tells, that saves a lot for our judges. It saves a lot for our commitment to make sure that we follow up on that as well. It's like a public defender, independent, you know, they have any money, you know, whatever. I don't know, you, you know, you're supposed to by law seek that information to make sure they don't have the mon, the monies to pay, whatever. And I don't know how many times that happens, but I can assure you in Chancery Court that the worst thing we do is say, you're going before the judge and swear before him in court that you don't have the money to pay for this. And I guarantee you nine out of ten of them will go, I got the money. So I think that's to your benefit. I think it's something that we do and we do a very good job of and it's something that we're committed to that didn't happen before. Something that we made a change in and all that. And Shannon is right. We keep our. Of course, one of our primaries to do our evaluations for us and all that, of which we get assistance from you guys as far as monetary to make regenate a, a party to us and what we do. Because without them, we couldn't, we couldn't hardly operate and do what we need to do without their assistance. We had a problem today. Uh, Shannon called over there and immediately they turned around what we needed done and all of that. So it got taken care of. So hats off to Regenate. Want to give them a plug here when we're, while we're talking. And I think that years ago, when I think Jay was here, maybe before Jay or Walter, I don't know. But when we made contract with them to make this, uh, flow a little bit easier, Laura remembers the date as well, they made it flow a little bit easier. They are a tremendous asset, not only to us, they're a tremendous asset to your constituency out there as well.
Mr. Swells.
Yeah, we'll have questions on that, yeah.
If the attitude that exists with Ms. McLaurin is widespread through your office, I commend you for that.
Thank you.
Because she has the right kind of attitude that we're here to serve the public.
Right.
And I, I appreciate that more than any of her other comments is that we know who we work for and that's the taxpayer. And, uh, I just appreciate her attitude and.
There's, there's certain, I appreciate that too. And there are certain things that you see reflected in our office because I am so anal, this Laura knows me. That I believe in the, the rules of fair, firm and consistency. I've always practiced fair, firm and consistency with my employees. I practice fair, firm and consistency for them to perform to the public. And I can assure you, all of them do that. And I can assure you, if a problem rings over two times, we're extremely busy. I expect it to be answered on the second ring. Now, I can't dictate that to everybody else in the county, but I won't say that's. And I can't dictate that to everybody else in the county, but I won't say that's a given everywhere else. But I'm telling you that they know what the rules are. They're very gracious in accepting those as being our motto, fair, firm, and consistent. Everybody walks in that door. And I commend them too for their, for what they do and how they do it and all that because they do work very professionally in their, in the areas that they perform and work in as well. Mr. Johnson, I appreciate you saying that.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate you, Shana.
All right.
Hey, Larry. Before we move on, last year during our budget, this gentleman came forward and, you know, what I'm talking about, presented lunacy court. You know, he pointed out that we pay a good bit more for, we budget more for that than Heinz County. Did y'all ever discuss that?
I would say we're probably one of the most conservative ones in all eighty-two counties. You're lucky there, because the constituency here is lucky in this county that they can come file a petition without an attorney. Most counties, you have, they would look them dead in the eye. Now, I had this discussion, and it was very close to my heart, and Craig might remember this, I think we might have talked about this. I went and got my judges. I said, let me tell you something. If a person walks in that door, our job is to service them and wait on them. We're not gonna send them to an attorney to get a commitment. And you go hire an attorney today and ask them to come back and file a hundred and forty-eight dollar petition and an attorney, I'd say we're probably one of the most reasonable, cheapest in the state of Mississippi. I don't know who that person was, but it's one thing I don't get a complaint of petition to, for somebody to be committed.
The lunacy court is, is that, is that under you? It is?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it falls under us.
Most of that, I think, is attorney's fees, isn't it?
A lot of that, yeah, a lot of it is attorney fees. Yeah, the contract with Reginate. A lot of my costs and all that is just pass-through costs.
Right.
That's all it is.
I got you. I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that department is mainly some court-appointed attorney's fees, Larry's statutory fees, and the contract with Reginate.
Yeah, really, I don't have anything in there but statutory fees on the lunacy side. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I was still about commitments.
The contract with Reginate is three hundred thousand?
Three thirty.
Three thirty, yeah, somewhere, three thirty.
Okay. And it comes out of that?
Yes.
So the three hundred we give them is totally separate then?
Yes.
Yeah, it is. It is, yeah, that's right. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I just said lunacy, but.
Before this contract went into place with Reginate, it was well over a hundred thousand dollars. It was
We'd spend a
I mean, it was, because you had to place the people, I mean, it was just something different.
Yeah.
It was so much more.
Right. I was just, yeah, it was the lunacy that was
I'm sorry, yeah. A lot of that's just contract, like she said, and That's the only thing on there.
Yeah, I think he, I might have been wrong, but I was thinking he said that ours was more than Heinz County, and I just didn't know what, I may be wrong on that.
Their fees are even, even when they pay. Their filing fees, do you know what their filing fee is?
It used And it's very possible they may put some of that money in another
Yeah, she's talking about their filing fees over there greatly exceed our filing fees. They're like three hundred and something, three hundred and something dollars over there.
Yeah.
For a commitment. That, that's one of the hard things about comparing counties, is within your departments, you have such flexibility of where you put something.
Yeah.
Which if they have a contract with Reginate or whoever it was
They may put it under there.
Then that's something totally separate.
Yeah.
They could put it under board if they wanted to.
Right.
So you're not comparing the second.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
All right. Have on.
Sure.
All right. As y'all know, Jessica Flood, I handle the land records side of Chancery Clerk.
And the Board Minutes.
And the Board Minutes, which, you know, I'll still be doing that. Anything, recording deeds, deeds of trust, anything pertaining to the land, not necessarily always pertaining to the land, but mostly. Of course, you've got power of attorney, healthcare directives. He mentioned DD two fourteen's. Those are not public.
I don't even know what that is, so.
You gotta be in the military to be able to
Yeah, they're not public, but we do keep them. If they need a copy, they can come in and they have to fill out a form to get it. But we have those as well. The other thing that we do, as y'all know, is collect delinquent taxes, which is a major money collection for us, which this year, we were kinda slow on our fees as far as records, land records, just probably because of the economy. But we are picking up now. We're back to about where we were last year. Fees for delinquent taxes, we're about where we were last year, maybe a little bit better. Of course, I do the Board Minutes and a lot of things that go with that are the Homestead chargebacks, the protests that we talked about today, I do that.
Y'all love John, didn't it?
What else? Abalarm tax exemptions, we're in the middle of doing that, and we prepare those for the Board as well. There's just a lot of things that fall under it. Of course, there's the passports. What else? Say. I mean, I know, I didn't bring my list of everything we do. But mainly, recording deeds and collection of the delinquent taxes is our main focus in land records. And then Board Minutes.
So Jessica, if you're out, just say for instance, you're out, who backfills you? How does all that?
Right now, it will, we're in the process of training David over here.
Doing some cross-training? Got you.
Training him, because y'all will be out, you know.
Well, I was gonna say that.
If you couldn't tell, I am pregnant.
It's what?
Except for the Board Minutes.
Got you.
Janice and I are kinda working together with that. She's gonna help me out.
That's
She's gonna have a baby and she'll be gone, I'm still relying on her.
I understand.
I can do, with our program, I can do some of it from home. So what Janice can help, I'll do the rest.
Okay. Which gonna be out by the half a day?
It's my first one.
What they do in China, they come have a baby and then that afternoon, they're back picking rice.
This gives me an opportunity to brag on Jessica, ever since she, you know, she's seeking another opportunity to work somewhere else. I didn't go spill her, if anybody believed that.
Oh, no. We've been recorded.
She may be recorded, and I'm a favor, because we stand right beside her. She was seeking employment, she'll tell you that. And she said right behind the open that she would like to come. And the first thing I did was go talk to the elected official of which she worked, and he gave me permission to talk to her. So y'all can believe what you wanna believe, but I'm gonna tell you the truth.
Well, I had to, I talked to John. I wasn't going anywhere. I mean, I didn't have anywhere to go.
We had nothing to do with that shit, and it's a good move for her. She has a bright future. But I'm gonna tell you what, she was a wonderful hire as well as the duties that I hired and had the opportunity to hire. I wanna brag on her on the minutes, but in the past, of course, when we used to do the minutes, Jay, Walter, you know, we used to get just a list of just what happened, verbatim, basically, just kinda written down. And then we went, when I became Chancery, we always looking for ways to make things better. It wouldn't be electronically or more, whatever, just better for you and better for the constituency and better for our jobs to be at our job. And we went to this program in which we struggled with Janice a little bit, right, Laura and Janice, and we struggled with a little bit and all that. But between Janice and Jessica, it has worked out to be a really, a real good working relationship, whereas Janice can back me up if she's not here or whatever, and I do appreciate that. But I will say that before, and Janice remembers this, we used to struggle to get the minutes here, you know, by Walter, at the next board meeting.
Yeah, that, believe me.
Oh, yeah.
And all that. Well, you know, things change. People retire, and sometimes we have celebrations and that makes sense. And all that. But, you know, we got out of doing things the old way because I'm always looking to look and do things the new way and modernize as we want. And we did, and I commend Janice working with Jessica, especially Jessica. As you notice, your minutes are ready at the next fifteenth meeting.
Right.
Not ready at the next thirtieth meeting.
Right.
And all that.
Tremendous.
And I'm telling you, they're accurate. They can be found, and discovery can be good on those. And I commend both the
For
working with us. And also Jessica diligently working hard to make sure that you have your minutes in front of you quickly and efficiently.
Are we using the new program?
Not yet.
Not there yet. We're going to, Jay.
Okay.
I wanna simplify, and that's what we're gonna do. We are going there, Jay, to simplify and make it a little bit better and all that to get away from the Q and A.
Yeah, 'cause we have, we're in contract, or we have a software contract till the end of this year, so we might as well just wait.
Yeah.
Get out of it. And then we worked with Michelle and I think
Rusty.
Rusty and Givory and all that looks too, I think.
So we gonna get all that available, where it would be available with the new program too?
Yeah, I hope so.
That's my understanding.
Get it worked out.
Tines loose ends up now before the fiscal year starts.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Should save us some money.
Yeah, it's supposed to be like
That's right, 'cause it's gonna be included with our price of doing the website.
Money, that's why we're so, and we collect money, we can be more proficient in what we do with money and stuff. Any other questions on lands or whatever?
No, thank you so much, Jessica.
Yeah, we have, we have a little slow year too, and I reflect on that, but it's picking up on that side of it as well.
So when you say you have a slow year, Larry, does that mean that there's nine, when people file, does that mean like they're buying houses and stuff?
You're not buying houses and you're not refinancing, and we're not getting our fees.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm saying.
'Cause I thought all that was kinda, things were rolling again, you know?
It's picked up now.
It's picked up now.
At the beginning of the year.
Just remember, between January and June, I have very little activity and very little money.
And it shows the activity. Whenever they get the activity reports for us from over here, from Renee, you can start seeing, it's kind of like a, it's a snowball effect, basically.
We, we watch, we have to watch every dollar because we need to make sure that we can pay payroll, you know, and stuff like that. I assume all y'all know that I go to the bank, borrow money. I don't come borrow money from neither. I go to the bank personally borrow money to make it happen. And when you become Chancery Clerk, that's the first thing you do, you go to the bank, make a loan.
So you stuck for a few months.
I'm stuck for a few months. You make a personal loan and then you, hopefully, then things are doing well and you start paying it back, and I'm like, it's not too soon. It's not, it's basically that who we are. That's the fee system, and that's who we are. We're kinda like an independent out there, running a business and our operation, our sales, our fees.
You know, it makes it difficult for us, and I'm sure you can appreciate this, being in this seat, is that, you know, every other department, we see everything. With you and Becky, we don't see anything, except what, you know, we budget for y'all. So that's the only thing that, you know, makes it, I guess, you know, somewhat cumbersome for us. But I, I think that
I mean, when you say see everything, I may be, I may be a little lost.
That's okay.
Well, I mean, we budget everything for the other.
Oh, y'all run their, y'all run in their offices.
Right.
Right.
In our case, if you need us, if you need our services, you come to our services. We're not taxing anybody. We're not doing any responsibility, you know, we just, we just use fees and then whatever fee. And take for example, for seven years, and I was gonna say this the last, but seven years when I've been I'll just go get a scanner. If I have a copy, go out, I mean, not a copy, but a computer, we just go get a computer. And this was the first year in this term that I've ever had to ask Laura for a computer, I think it was, when Laura asked you, budget a Hoover computer for us. And y'all graciously did, but that's part of our business. But it depends on what fees that I have, you know? And we use those fees, and whatever I've got left over in the year, I give back to y'all legally, so it doesn't matter.
Right.
And I, you know, try to be, try to be good. And I'm a good steward of my money. Everybody knows me as a court supervisor, but I didn't, Laura tell you, I didn't spend money.
All right. Mr. Moore?
Laura didn't say anything there.
She knew she was on
No comment.
Hello, David.
Hey, how are y'all?
All right.
All right. Well, I work in Chancery Court. We, of course, do file divorces, like contested or joint. We do child support, child custody, DHS cases that deal with child support. We do, of course, I mean, Shana, I mean, we work together. We're in the same place. If somebody wants to confirm a tax deed, they bring it through Chancery Court. Gosh, I didn't make a list either. Adoptions, those are always fun.
Conservatorship.
Conservatorships, guardianships, Larry's got a bunch of those. Estates.
Annexations.
Yeah.
Annexations. We'll contest it.
Yeah, we love annexations.
Like as in when a city annexes more area? Or y'all just record the documents or does it for quarters? When they get sued?
An annexation is not official until the Chancery Judge declares that it's valid.
Okay.
So it has to run through that?
You have to file it, and there's a public comment period, I think. Anyway.
And bond validations too.
And bond validations too.
We, David, to tell you, we, again, we're looking for ways to improve our services to the people and also put Rankin County further up on the map and all. And so since we've been there, we've done a lot of scanning. We've got our records, you know, backed up and scanned properly. We've started, we scan all of our minutes and things of that nature up there now. But we've gone, we're the first county in the state of Mississippi to go E-recording, and also we're one of the sixth county or seventh county to go MEC, which has worked out for us and probably, if we had to do it over again, we might not have stepped off. Everybody is convenient way electronically for attorneys to make their initial filing by petition, and then they can do all the other things by sitting in their office, as we discussed, I may have been laying online records this morning. But they can actually sit in their office and do their work, you know, in reference to that case that they filed or whatever it may be.
You saying you would have held off on it some?
Well, the thing about Jay is like anything, his brand new Supreme Court, of course, just came out of Supreme Court, and Judge Walter was pushing it real, real hard, and of course, all the bigger counties, he wants on there, you know, right away. But it's like anything else.
Got some bugs.
It's got a lot of bugs in it and everything. Now, I'll be great, I'll say this, they were there this morning. One of our biggest bugs is keeping up with monies. We handle a tremendous amount of dollars and money.
That's not good.
And all and uh it we have to go back physically and look at all the docket and and my administrative assistant has to go in there, she's doing a GAL payment, she has to go back and correct me if I'm wrong, these guys are more versed than I am. I'm I pick up on things, but she has to go in there and go back and look at the whole docket. It may have been, what, three years or five, four years and people had paid in uh these monies that were required to by court and you gotta make sure that whatever they're asking for by by reference to an order being given to you, you gotta make sure that all matches and we're talking about, we're not talking about even amounts of money. And so it was extremely hard for her and she can make mistakes. And so they were there, they tried to help us Jay to to outline and make it a little bit easier, accounting a little bit easier. As Jay, as Jay, uh as uh David can tell you too, that there was, there's a lot of little glitches things and you well know, working in software, the things that we'd like to see improved and all, but you know, how do you tell the chief justice?
That's in version two.
Yeah, how do you tell the chief justice, uh chief, we uh we'd like to have this done and all that and he'll refer us to his staff and all that, which have been good to work with.
They have been real responsive.
They have been real responsive.
Yeah, they got you now. Ain't like you go away.
But I but the the problem it puts out there is the expectations of it moving fast forward because during my convention this week, uh a lot of that came up and a lot of the clerks don't want it because of the things they've heard us say about the little bitty bits and pieces. So I think somewhere a chief justice has got to come to a conclusion that, you know, we need to merge private with public and come out with an easier solution and make this make this a real useful too and all that. But we bit the bullet, we did it and we're there and I can say my office is second to none as far as anything we do electronically, our services we provide.
So you saying possibly in the future, it'll be a private offering that they'll tie into it too?
There's a big push now to try to integrate the the private sector who have expertise.
Yeah.
Out there with this federal program that was designed by the, you know, by them.
Yeah.
To try to merge it, as you well know, if you can get private side and public side and what we got and make it a little, tweet it, tweet it and make it a little easier to use and all of that. So uh we had a little resistance at first, but most of them were my age, you know, they'd act the way they've been doing it all these years and they didn't wanna change and all that. But I think in the majority now that uh Hoopy, that most of them have agreed and like the system and we have public access for those who come in to be able to use public. If my attorney was at the counter the other day and he said, well, how do I do this? And David graciously said, follow me, I'll show you how to put it on MEC back there and everything. And we help them. I mean, we're we're first class in helping folks and making them understand how to do it and we'll help them, you know, do all we need to do with that. Uh court's moving, we're we're getting bigger. Uh like I say, we did uh, I think last year, year before Craig, we did thirteen hundred divorces uh and all, but it just seems like it's getting bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger. And I don't, I'm not, I know y'all are helping me and I'm not, I'm not here to complain about that, but the building's getting smaller and smaller and smaller and smaller. Uh even with our security this morning, we discovered since nobody be able to go beyond uh the checkpoint now, then both parties who hate each other a lot of times, they're gonna be sitting in the same room. And uh before we were able to take the split parties and put them at the end of the hall and put these over here and Hoopy, I don't know how we're gonna address that, but it just, it really creates another tense emotional moment. It was so quiet in that room for a while ago. We noticed it was so quiet and that's because the the opposing parties were sitting in the same room.
So that that happened since last week or the first?
Yeah, yeah, we shut the door down. You know, nobody goes beyond the point now. We we check IDs on all attorneys and they'll laugh. They, well, you know us, you know what, too bad. We gotta check you, uh we'll check you in now. And and that's, you know, and I'm gonna have to get back with uh Mr. Stringer and Mr. Mr. Slade too because a lot of the changes are being made, changed our offices. I mean, they no longer can come through our offices and go here. Well, that puts a burden on us, it puts a burden on her and all that because we not gonna get up there and pull files for attorneys as we have thirty, forty attorneys come in on Fridays. We're not gonna do that. We don't have time to do that. We we get through by the end of the day, we've gotta make sure that stack is way down here. Uh we've gotta put everything on my on them and in our system before it's five o'clock and all that. We don't have time to stop and do all do all of that kinda stuff unless uh changes. But but court is moving, uh it's it's court is not slow, it's moving forward, moving fast and I have a super staff, uh people working out there too. Um anyway, but y'all got any questions for David on court and I'm on, I'll let, I'll close what I do and then let that go.
We have a increase for court administrators. Is that that pay increase that we pay?
That's a two dollar fee. Is that what you want to talk about, Laura?
The new court administrator right when we just passed.
Yeah.
Oh, that's the one y'all passed for court administrator, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, a lot of that budget, if y'all looking at that budget, a lot of that budget, court reporters, Bayless and all those, y'all's those are just pass-throughs to me. They're just pass-throughs. They don't, they're not really, they're part of my budget cause they're in court, but they don't, they're not part of my budget, if you know what I mean. They all work for the state.
You don't have to pay them.
No. Y'all paying them, but y'all, it makes my budget look like y'all giving me a lot of money, but you're giving money because the statute says you will pay these folks as Laura teaches. So really that budget, probably the only thing in that budget is my statutory stuff and that's it. And that's all on that stuff. So don't get misled a lot of times by that, cause like to say, I thought the Bayless should be in the sheriff's budget, I think the.
Well, we took the bailiffs out.
You did take them out, yeah. I've been kind of.
We took the bailiffs. We put them over under the sheriff.
But court reporters are in there and other.
But right, the AOC, we have court reporters and court administrators.
Of course, we have to collect additional forty dollars now because, you know, Supreme Court passed to pay all the judges all over the state of Mississippi and, you know, that was a hard pill to swallow for us cause it's kind of an unfunded mandate. And uh we've had to suffer through that with a lot of people saying, you mean your fee went from this to this, really? But, you know, the legislature passed it and it's an unfunded mandate and we have to suck it up and pay it. And uh Laura, I'll tell you, it gets old out there after a while.
I think this was a good point that Jay was talking about earlier, is just what you said, your budget's one thing, but we don't know, we don't know where the money goes. So, you know, it it appears different than it is because you just like what you just said, you're, you know, I think you said the bailiffs in there. I had, or was in there at one time.
They were in there.
Like the court reporters in there.
Yeah, I mean, I had no idea.
Yeah, that money just goes straight to them.
See, we, I mean, I I don't know about the rest of the board, but I had no idea that those fees were in there.
Well, there's a breakdown of fees right here in this judicial training, this civil assistance fund, this court electronic, records management, court administration, law library, and it goes on and on and on, breaking the fees down out there. It's kinda like justice court, uh speed money. When you pay a ticket, where does that money go? It goes to all these different agencies and that's where ours is too, you know, but most everything that I have that you see would be statutory or court ordered, uh and all that. So there really no hidden money there. It's just money that we never see, that's passed on to us that, as Aunt Laura says, it's just a pass-through in our budget. The biggest thing that we spend money on is white goods and equipment. Am I, do y'all agree with that? That's it. White goods and equipment to keep our offices running outside of that. Um I can't think anything else, Mr. Stringer, other than that. I mean.
The employee salaries and of course.
Yeah, the employee salaries.
We've gone back and forth over the last years.
Yes, sir.
Insurance.
Yes, sir.
And uh one of the things, I think that this is, I'm repeating what I was told correctly, is that uh in the previous Chancery clerk, I think the last year, the county funds were about two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh you can see even with us repicking up the uh health insurance, this year it would still be significantly under that of two hundred thousand.
Yeah, look, roughly about fifty-five thousand less.
Right, and I and I I promise you, I don't, I don't ask you anything. If I got fees, I'm not gonna bug you for a computer. I'm not gonna bug you for a scanner because I don't have to, you know, but, you know, so we just go and replace it. That way, I mean, other departments don't do that, I know, because like Jay said, you know, you know, if you're gonna buy a computer, they have to run it by you and they had to get approval or whatever and all that kinda stuff. But but the only thing that we need, we use our money for is things of that nature. That's all we use it for. And then at the end of the year, as Laura knows, uh and we all know that whatever money is left over, we're gonna return to y'all anyway, if y'all can use, and y'all can use whatever you want to. And you don't, you don't tell me what y'all use it for or whatever. But uh the other side of that coin is too that uh my responsibilities are not, my liability is tremendous, as you well can see, cause I'm fiduciary wise. We have millions of dollars and and all that and of course, and I have the responsibility of uh, even though an attorney has a fiduciary responsibility in my court, I'm still responsible for him accounting to the court. So I still have a fiduciary responsibility. One of the things that I'm going to do this year, and we discussed this and I think I may have discussed it with Laura, I can't remember, but uh the law requires me to carry a hundred thousand dollar bond. I should be carrying probably about a two million dollar bond uh for the things that I handle personally that are assigned to me by court and that I spend many, many hours night and day on. And uh these these guys will tell you that, you know, a lot of times I'm up all night with people in hospital, whatever. But but in case you do know or don't know, those are things that I do that are assigned to me by court by virtue of either no family or a pass on, like Craig became board attorney, then I inherited one of his wards uh and everything. By the fact, I just settled his and I wrote him a check for five hundred thousand dollars to, anyway.
Dang, Greg, go ahead on.
But anyway, but it was a, it was a good thing this kid had inherited some money. Yeah, right.
Oh, so the five hundred thousand didn't go to you?
I told him, if you seek a good attorney, you might wanna see Craig out.
It is recorded.
It went to the young man.
That's the young man.
That was his money.
But but I have, I have guardianships, I take care of children. I have one at Mississippi State now, one at the University of Alabama in college and the rest of them I have, I may be holding their money by virtue of some monies they received by by way of a product liability or through insurance or whatever it may be, uh suit or whatever. Anyway.
Not forget my patients. You have some of those as well?
Oh, yeah, I got, I got, yeah, I got her patients too. Uh I have a lot of her patients that uh, I got patients at State Hospital. I've got two paranoid schizophrenics, one in Indiana, Mississippi and one in Petal, Mississippi. Uh the recent one in Indiana, Mississippi just swallowed three more AA batteries.
Oh.
Uh we're at University Medical Center trying to pass those and then last year she only swallowed batteries once and took forty pills and I spent time with her in ICU waiting to her come back from recovery and all that kinda stuff. Now, I'm not complaining about this thing because I. That's why I spend a lot of my time with these people, taking care of them because the wards are my responsibility, as Craig had told you and all that. So we, you know, it's just a, uh I have to call Hoopy sometimes and say, Hoopy, can you pick up my man to go to church? Cause I've been up all night or whatever. So don't think that what we do, and I know you don't, but don't let anybody ever proceed to think you, we don't, we don't have responsibility and we don't, we don't, we not take that responsibility in life. We work hard and and uh make sure that everybody that we take care of because some way they're your constituent that I'm taking care of. And I make, I wanna make a great presentation, not only that we care about that constituent and all that, but we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that every need that they have is met responsibly and legally and what we need to do to make that happen. Uh right now, I have probably a, probably a little over, I don't know, fifty or sixty uh uh guardianships, uh conservatorships and estates. And and I close a lot of estates. A lot of estates are really difficult for me because I have to be an investigator and I have to go and find out who sold the paint equipment and where is the trailer, where's the car, where's the insurance money? How come you didn't pay your bills and all that kinda stuff and everything else. And then some of them get very comical that sometimes. Uh uh they'll threaten to kill each other as family and everything. But the most interesting one that I have right now. Huh? Well, I'm probably finna get rid of Miss Ponder. I, it's the first time I've ever had a client uh that is smart, elegant and uh and has plenty of money. And I don't want any more of those, just give me the ones that I have to go to Medicaid, Medicare and Social Security only take care of, cause they're happy because they got somebody to take care of them and love them and all that kinda stuff. Don't give me one with any money anymore and all that because they seem to be the ones that are most difficult because they wanna tell me how to do my job. You know, they go out and rent cars and they cannot supposed to be driving and go to the bank and overdraft twenty-five hundred dollars and they're not supposed to be doing that and all that kinda stuff too. So I'm constantly involved with the banks, the hospitals, the, you know, the psychiatrists and everybody else and trying to make things work and all that to tell you that uh if y'all don't see me a lot, that's where I am. I'm usually taking care of somebody and they'll tell you that a lot of times that I'm, I'll drag in there sometimes in the morning, but no, I'll be there if I can be there and everything. But we run a good ship. Uh I have no complaints about any of my employees, I have no complaints in the way they run things and what we do for people. Uh I'd say we're probably a department that definitely head and shoulders uh that serves the public and also represents you guys when we do it. Uh we make sure that, you know, that they know that we're a county and we're all one team and we're all uh representative of you guys as well as representative of what we do and the, and uh with all our constituency and all our areas and all that. So we love our jobs and we appreciate whatever y'all can do for us. We're not, we don't ask for anything, we're not gonna ask for anything. Um but whatever y'all do, just keep us afloat. Uh we appreciate that.
Thank you, Larry.
We got that covered.
There you go, Lynn.
All right. Well, with that, uh then I guess we would, if we wanna continue, we just start down the list again on the general county.
Okay. Any more questions for Larry and his team? Thank y'all so much for what y'all do.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming by.
Yeah, I'd love for y'all to come visit us and everything too. I uh.
Ain't nowhere to park.
Exactly.
Did a good job out there this past week there too, Larry, with the conference.
Can't get by the security now.
Yeah, you be checking us on our badges and stuff. Who are you?
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
You bet, man, you bet.
I'll take that as a no, Larry.
Thank y'all.
Well, appreciate it, bud.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You bet, bud. Thank y'all.
Hey, uh, we going to lunch now?
Why, is that in form of a motion to recess?
How long are we gonna be here?
Well, pretty soon it'll be there then.
Yeah. Can we break and come back?
Is that in form of a motion to recess?
Unless we going to just wait and come back.
Is to have a quick discussion just on scheduling. I wanna go over once again, uh when Laura has to have one.
Right, let's.
To beat the law. And what we have to do, I think we have to have an open meeting, I think we have to.
Well, we do, but I have to advertise, I'll have to have my advertisement to the paper by the eighteenth, morning of the eighteenth, to give you sufficient time so that we, I can present the budget and the tax levy on the second, on the first meeting of September, which will be the second for uh approval. Um so the only other scheduled meeting we have outside of today is the fifteenth. Well, that's too late cause then Monday's on the eighteenth.
I thought we have the seventh or sixth.
Here we have the.
It's on the schedule, but that's always been a.
Oh, but that's, that's been iffy. That's our budget work session. We don't have another formal meeting.
Formal meeting until the fifteenth.
Scheduled meeting other than that one.
Cause I, I had assumed we were gonna just could take a couple today and then come back Wednesday for full blown.
And we can, I I think y'all will be pleased to know that I I think maybe we could just do a little bit Wednesday morning and could be through because as y'all can see what I presented to you today with everything that we've included is a balanced budget for general county.
Right.
Then the only thing that would be left to go over is we do have a couple of matters in the solid ways. If y'all wanna know anything about the road departments upcoming budget, road and bridge was included in that. We've gone over fire, we have nine-one-one budget. And then outside of that, the rest or, you know, the tax levies like for all the fire districts and everything that are in and out money. So the only, that's the only big ones we have to go over.
The balanced budget, the balanced budget reflects how much of a milli-.
Just a one point one million dollar increase this year.
Is that all?
At the same mills that we are currently operating at.
I would like for you to get that stuff I asked you about last week and uh look at our road, our whole departments and see how many people, you know, what kinda time they have saved up and.
Oh, okay.
You know, the CPI for this year on the um cost of living increase.
We have uh also, Mr. Bishop has mentioned it previously and I think we've all have agreed that at some point we need to put in, put into place some kind of a performance evaluation thing. Are we putting any money in the budget for performance evaluation?
Well, you know, it, and honestly, that's why I voted against that today is that I think it's difficult for us to have a realistic, somebody come in and look at our facilities if we don't have an idea of what kinda service we're offering. So, you know, I think we need to get somebody in here to look at the the services we're offering in terms of personnel to be able to even have a starting point to know where to go forward with. Cause if we have adequate people uh for our departments, then we know we don't need additional space. But if we don't have adequate people for our departments, then we'll know in the future, then we'll, you know, need to grow it bigger.
Yeah, but we knew we're gonna have a, uh, we know we gotta look at Chancery and Justice. I mean, if, I mean, if you, you even wanna expand, we know we gotta do something.
In terms of?
Either remodel, redo, rebuild.
Something. I I agree with what you're saying, but I mean, we know we gotta look at at uh doing something. I mean, that's, it's just a given.
Colonel Stringer and, you know, with his hands-on approach and managing the campus, I've heard him say on more than one occasion, we got an awful lot of onesies. And I think at some point, especially as our, as our workforce gets older and gets closer to retirement, that we ought, you know, kinda put some people in place that are either do some cross-training or or something so we don't get caught. I mean, I, I, the one that keeps coming to my mind is Scotty. And at EOC, I mean, he's about the only guy we got that knows anything about these radios.
Oh, heck, we can just go steal one from Jack's communication.
And I guess that's what would happen. That's where he came from.
That's right.
You know, I guess there, there's other ways and maybe I'm worried about something I shouldn't be worried about, but but when he says that on more and more occasion.
You know, let's say an employee leaves and you go find somebody that's qualified to do that job, you still got the interim that the new person has to get up to speed and understand what's been going on. There's no continuity.
Right.
And we really have that right now in the road department.
I agree and, you know, and the road department, we probably train somebody and keep them. The only problem in some of the other departments, you know, and we've had it within our, our office, you get somebody, start training them, either they wanna move on or you train them and somebody snatches them up. I mean, that, that's what you're always gonna deal with. So you can't always feel like you're gonna, you're training somebody for the future.
And on the road department, it almost came up this morning, talking about the work orders and tracking the work orders and so forth. There's a lot more than just work orders that needs to be tracked.
Right.
There's a lot of stuff that needs to be tracked. As we get in a new system, we're gonna have somebody that is the manager of that system. That may well be not, not, not just Lynn, who sits here and takes the telephone call and fills out a work order. That work order and everything else that goes on that work road department needs to be tracked, uh like requisitions, et cetera. They're doing that full-time.
Right.
That's a full-time job. And that can, whenever you call up and say, can you tell me the status? And that can, whenever you call up and say, can you tell me the status? Look it up and know what the status is or keep up with it and identify that something needs to be done before you have to call.
Right.
Uh, so that's, uh, that, you know, is going to be another discussion of why do you need somebody to do that when it's never been done before? You're right, it's never been done before and it's not for you.
And I can tell you, that's probably one of the biggest, I guess, complaints out there from our constituents is road work and things like that that are associated. When a call comes back down, boils down to it, it comes down, back down to road work, ditches, whatever. The fact of the matter is that there's, uh, and people get more aggravated with us. If we don't know, why hasn't this been done? Well, all I know is I turned it in, but I don't have the time to go back and check to make sure that it has or has not, where it's at and everything else. And you're saying the exact thing is, you got to have someone that can track that from.
Welcome aboard.
Starting here, all the way through it. And even to the fact of, like you said, the requisition, how much money did we pay into this? I mean, it's really a big broad. That's right. Exactly. That's right. It's, it is a business. Right.
George Hurley came and shot at us earlier.
On the road department, like I said, you know, we really got onesies there. And there's, I'm guessing, okay, but I'm more than a guess, there's really not, when George was here.
I think you got your discounters to leave though.
He had four pan working for him, Leon and Dale.
What I said, uh, last week, that's what I said.
Dale has Leon and Dale.
Right.
And we need to start doing certain, to say, not only a business manager. That can do a continuity issue. But also somebody that can come in and start understanding the road business. And of course, they do much more than roads. But understand that business, keeping the county functioning from that. And with some sort of continuity, uh, not only to reinforce what's going on, but with some continuity if, uh, Dale is not around.
Right, I agree.
And, and that's going to cause money.
Well, that service is one that you can't, uh, well, none, none you can cut. But that service is one, I guess, it's seen the most by all.
That's right.
I mean, and, and I say by all, I mean, it's whatever area you're in, you see that and it's the worst. They don't, they don't care what's going on over here. They don't even know what's going on.
Care about the Chancery.
They don't.
Is that he, uh. Hired someone, they can almost make more money as a jailer now. And for him to hire someone, they, they have to have a commercial driver's license. Well, if he can get them a commercial driver's license, they can work with the traffic.
Oh, yeah.
So that's the first area, I don't. Mr. Bishop, you said, that's one of the first areas we need to look at and put some sort of personnel regulation structure, manpower structure in place.
All right, let me ask you this.
It's going to be difficult for busters to come in here and, and take a, uh, I guess, an unbiased opinion toward these facilities whenever, I personally believe you need somebody that's not tied to this county.
Let me ask you this, I, I like what you're saying because I'm, I've been on the same realm as what you're saying. I love that idea. Can we not integrate both at the same time?
You know, gentlemen, my advice is you may be a little bit early in wanting to do this. And the, uh, I'm, I'm familiar with the audit department and performance office.
Right.
I'm familiar with that. Be careful what you ask for.
So do you think it'll hurt us to have them come in here and evaluate what we do?
I think the timing is important. I think the timing is very important. Be careful what you ask for.
If you infer what he's, uh, uh, saying, so, which most of us do. Yes.
If you don't want to know the answer, don't ask the question.
That's right. All right. So.
So do we want to, uh, leave and come back Wednesday morning?
Well, that would be my recommendation, but, uh, I want to see what the board has to say about it. It may not be a bad idea, the time you go eat now, you go to something to eat, you're looking at three o'clock. And I've got to be in flow at five, so there's no, I mean, I can't. But it doesn't matter to me, I mean, I, my day.
Come back for a few minutes Wednesday.
Blown, but if we can, think we can handle it Wednesday morning.
Wednesday afternoon?
Morning, evening?
Wednesday morning? Wednesday afternoon, Wednesday night?
Six o'clock, Wednesday morning? I mean, it doesn't matter to me. Can you do eight o'clock Wednesday morning? Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm already canceled a job, well, I'm juggling a job for it, so it don't, won't matter to me. Wood? Wednesday morning, eight o'clock? Jay?
If I'm not, y'all start without me?
Wait a minute, that's right, that's the morning after Tuesday, I forgot. Well, we'll get started on that, we, we can get started. So I have a motion to recess till Wednesday morning, eight o'clock?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morris, questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like a sign, motion carries. We're in recess till Wednesday morning, got a slight delay?